Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? At this time, I'd like to introduce United States Army Veteran Patrick Williams. Disabled Army Veteran, served October of 1959 to October of 1962, rising to the rank of E Specialist Class. He's earned numerous awards throughout his military career, is retired from Colts, and is currently a Clark Summit Councilman, United States Marine Corps, and Mayor Herman Johnson, Mayor of Clark Summit, Member of Friends of the Forgotten, VFW 7069, Disabled Vets, Post One, Ann Marie Corps League, United States Army Veteran Stuart Bailey, longtime employee of Lackawanna County Veterans Affairs and a friend to all veterans, graduate of Valley Forge Military School, served the United States Army as SP-3 during the Korean War Conflict, and stationed in Berlin, Germany, Korean War. I'd like to thank you, gentlemen. Would the three of you like to come up to the podium? Gentlemen, I'd like to thank you for your, I'd like to thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner, for inviting us. Will everyone please put their right hand over their heart? Veterans may hand salute, and please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for inviting us.
Absolutely. I'd like to have a moment of silence. City Controller Roseanne Novembreno had over thirty-some years of being the city controller for the city of Scranton. She did a great job. She was very diligent, graduate of Marywood University, and just a great lady. And all of us who knew her absolutely had something special in our life because she was, there was no one like Roseanne Novembreno. She was absolutely second to none. So, please keep her and her family and her thoughts and prayers. And also, this was just a tragedy. Pensacola Navy Base shooting. Joshua Watson, naval officer, Airman Mohammed Hotman, Airman Apprentice Cameron Walters. Please keep our servicemen and their families and our thoughts and prayers where they go through such a horrible time. But I have to bring up Joshua Watson actually charged the shooter and everything else. And he was defending all of his, all of the other servicemen and women that were there and trying to protect them that day. And he was unarmed. So, please keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Our servicemen and women really mean the world to us, or we wouldn't be standing here today. Just a moment of silence. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, December 11, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting to order, 10:05 a.m., the Commissioners Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue, Lackawanna County Government, and at the Slo, at the Globe. My favorite place to be, at the Globe. It is. It really is.
Your favorite?
Yeah. My grandma worked here for thirty-five years, the Women's Shoe Department, absolutely.
Mine's 513 West Gray Street.
There we go. So, bring this meeting to order. I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Kurt Kimoni, Executive Director of Lackawanna County Visitors' Bureau, to come up and talk about, I'm not sure if anybody saw this, the paper. Now, think about this. Now, Pat, you guys, Mayor, you'll remember this, Stu, you mean, most of the people in this audience. The Lackawanna River was called the lackey. Think about it. It was brown, it was yucky, it smelled, there was contamination in it. If there was a fish in it, you'd be afraid to eat it. And it's clean now, it's beautiful, there's award-winning trout, we have a beautiful trail alongside of it, there's no debris, no garbage in it, nothing's running into it, and if anything is, Bernie Gruber Girl is making sure it's being taken away immediately. With that being said, we are basically, we have an opportunity to vote on the best river. And the Lackawanna River is one of them. So, I'm gonna let Kurt, I called Kurt this morning when I saw this, the paper yesterday. Said, Kurt, would you come in and say a few words? Because I want the Lackawanna River, which forty years ago was probably the worst river in the United States, to be the best river now because it's clean, it's brown trout, it's beautiful, and everybody loves to be on the trail alongside of it. And I don't mind being the biggest cheerleader because it really matters. This, water is life and life is water, and Lackawanna River means a lot to all of us. Kurt, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. And we can't have this conversation, especially with what you brought up, without talking about the Lackawanna River Conservation Association.
Bernie Gruber.
Not only are they the catalyst for cleaning up the river and all of the good works that they do with watershed and making sure that the river is a beautiful asset for the community. They were also the nominating body that got the Lackawanna River up for Pennsylvania River of the Year. We're one of five rivers, we're the only river that's in the northeast part of the state. Three of them are in western Pennsylvania, and one is in the southeast. And it obviously would be a feather in our cap to win. It's a program that's run by DCNR. They've been picking the Pennsylvania River of the Year since 1983. It's obviously done now as part of an online vote. We have been nominated before, and again, just being nominated, as I said in that article, helps our community, it promotes our river. We have wonderful events like Shiver Fest that go on. That'll be coming up in January, January 18th, where it's a race on the river, kayaks and canoes race down.
Commissioner Cummings is gonna be canoeing it this year.
You've gotta, you've gotta brave some elements to do it, but it's a wonderful event. And like you said, we have the Heritage Trail alongside it. This is an asset not only for our community, but it also enables us with tourism and hospitality to be able to attract people. There's a very popular trend in tourism right now, especially amongst younger demographics, millennials. In our industry, it's called adventure tourism. And it's, it's an active lifestyle. It's getting people out with hiking, jogging, kayaking, canoeing, all of these things that people can travel and be active and out in nature. And we are a beautiful destination for that in Lackawanna County. And one of the assets that we promote the most to promote that is the Lackawanna River and all of its surrounding entities. And so, we are thrilled that we are nominated, and we are also pushing hard to see if we can get a chance to win it. People can vote at PARiveroftheyear.org. You can find a link to that on the Visitors' Bureau Facebook page, and we will be running a campaign for the next couple of weeks on social media to try to push and, and get people to click on the link, make it as easy as possible for people to vote for the Lackawanna River. If they win this, the association will receive a DCNR $10,000 grant to go towards conservation watershed and, and helping beautify the river. And also, it'll be a year-long celebration of the Lackawanna River with different events that'll be planned special for whichever river wins.
Just recently, Carbondale Area's Police Department won Best Police Dog, and it was online voting. You know what I mean? And their dog came in third overall, and they got a nice grant for it that's gonna help to sustain the dog and anything else they have going on up there that has to do with the Canon Department, part of the Carbondale Area Police Department. So, this is our opportunity to make Lackawanna River number one, which will be really great for all of us.
Absolutely. And we're up against some highly populated areas in the Pittsburgh region, so the more we can get together and do this, and one of the things that, as a resident, lifelong resident, that I'm most proud of is we do support our communities, and I really hope that we can pull together and make a good showing and try to let the Lackawanna River have its day.
Absolutely. Now, how do you do it? How do you vote?
You can go to PARiveroftheyear.org, or to make things easy, you can simply go to the Lackawanna County Visitors Bureau Facebook page and all of our social media sites, there'll be links there. And again, we'll be running a social media campaign for the next week or so, pushing it out to all of the surrounding counties and Lackawanna County, trying to get as many people to click on that link and vote for the Lackawanna River as possible.
Would the board like to add anything about the river?
Good job.
Thank you. I did wanna, if you don't mind, drop off our new winter visitors guide.
Don't get the wire again. Why did they set it up like that anyway, again? Like, they know that that's an issue, why'd they do it like that?
Thanks. That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Kurt. Great job as usual. Good luck with the river. We're all gonna be pushing for Lackawanna River, so please, everyone in the viewing audience, in the audience today, please make sure you go on and vote PARiver.org and vote for Lackawanna River. It's the best river around, right, Kurt? There we go. Absolutely. Okay. Proclamation presentations, 19-0299, Commissioner Cummings.
A small business spotlight.
They threw a sopple, but it's usually the last one.
Yeah. Small Business Spotlight is Tiki Bar and Grill. Is someone here from Tiki Bar, Backstreet's Tiki Bar and Grill?
Mr. Zalinski's in the back row.
Hi, how are ya? Come on up. So, tell us about your business and how you started and why and everything.
We're open two months now. We sold them back up in October. And I've been doing, I've been doing Jay-Z tours in the, in the community here for, it'll be nineteen years coming up, and one of our main things that we always did, we always had a great tailgate with the food and everything. And it was spinoff from that. We, every year, we always had people looking to cater their events and do, for graduation parties, stuff like that. So, I always wanted to look into having a nice place, so we can do the food, nice atmosphere for people to come, enjoy themselves, a family atmosphere. I've been looking for a place for a couple of years, and I came along, it's a place used to be called Reps over in West Scranton. It's well-known in the community, over in Kaiser Valley there. And the only one bad thing about it was it was an old, it was a smoking bar. You know, it was an old smoking bar. A lot of people took the food to come out, you know? But, but I went in and we kept the back bar, it was absolutely beautiful there. It's, it's a really nice piece there. We, we redid the whole thing over from there, and nice woodwork and everything, cleaned it up really nice, and we turned it into like a family restaurant slash bar. People come down, you can bring your kids, come down, enjoy yourself, have a nice meal. And one other thing we did, we put a huge patio out back, a nice, a nice tiki bar, and we're, people looking for, planning graduation parties. We have a couple of high schools already contacting us, and people looking for graduation parties for the kids from school, christening, stuff like that, looking to do some outdoor events. Also, one thing that we are gonna be doing, we're gonna be hosting our own events and trying to raise money for, for local events. And one of the main things is these, these gentlemen right here, so veterans. My dad was a proud veteran of the Korean War, and if it wasn't for these guys, we wouldn't be here. So, I wanna definitely have, have a nice annual event at the place there. We're gonna, and I'm trying to work out the details now, work with some people, and have a nice event there to raise the money for the local veterans and help them out. Because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be standing here today, guys. I appreciate all your work. Just trying to have a nice place, clean, keep it, keep it simple. We're open 11 o'clock, so we're not open late, we're not a nuisance, we're not a bar. I wanna be known as a restaurant, people come down with the kids, enjoy themselves, and have a good time, little entertainment, and get it out there as that, you know?
So, what made you do this? What made you?
Well, we, like I said, we, I had the, I'm still doing currently the Jay-Z tours, and we do a lot of food and catering out of there, we've been doing for years.
Okay.
With a lot of the food, with the trips, and everybody's asking, you know, can we, can you cater our party? Can you do this? And, and we've been doing that for the last couple of years, and trying to expand and do something nice.
There you go.
One thing that's, went good is, and I focus my trips on a family business, and kids come, come down with the trips and have a good time, and that's what I'm trying to do with the restaurant here, keep carrying on with that philosophy.
That's, that's great. Thank you for letting us know that. And that's what we like to see, is when our small businesses are expanding. And that's what we're seeing across our county, finally. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate you having the courage to go out and open another, yet another area of business and continue with your other. So, that's great. Very proud of you and proud to have you here. Another Lackawanna County business success, and I hope you do very well, and I hope the community supports you, which I know they will, we always do, so.
One thing I've been getting in tremendous is the support from, from the valley up there, people coming down saying, "Thank you. This is a nice place, we're looking forward to come down, nice clean places, get something to eat, relax, and enjoy yourself." And people like the atmosphere. I'm getting a lot of great compliments, and makes me feel good, I did something right, you know?
Well, we're very proud of you here, so you should feel good because it's your day. So, you should, you should feel good about the fact that you've just expanded a business and not, not, you know, it's not an easy thing to do. It's very difficult to have a small business, and especially with some of the regulations that are coming down the pike. So, congratulations to you on that expansion.
Yeah, we're constantly changing the menu up, adding on slowly. We're gonna be focusing on more dinners and different, different stuff coming up in the next couple of weeks. One thing I'm gonna be, I had it on the menu, was my mom's homemade pierogies right from Boulder.
Oh, nice.
They are phenomenal. And, quick story, I sold 300 dozen pierogies when I worked back in Emo's Staff when I was nineteen years old. I wanted to go to Johnson School. My dad was a bus driver, we were rich back then, and, and he's like, "If you wanna go to school, we'll figure a way out to do it." So, I went out, I was, I was always into selling stuff, and I was telling the guys, I brought my mom's pierogies, and the guy goes, "Boy, they're delicious, can I buy some?" Right from there, I started selling them from the guys, and next thing you know, my mom is rolling 300 dozen, at five dozen, five dollars a dozen, we paid for her semester at Johnson School over the summer, you know? So, that got me always triggered to keep that recipe and go on. And my mom just passed away recently, back two months ago, right when we were ready to open a restaurant. It was kinda tough. But to keep her legacy on, we're gonna be rolling pierogies out, and her, and her, when she's looking down on it, you know?
What was your mom's name?
Helen.
Helen. See, that's the kind of stories that we hear when we hear about how a small business started. You started a small business based off of trying to make money to go to, to college, and this is where you are today. And it was a long road from that point to this point, but we're getting to hear your story here at the county now because we have you here in, in a spotlight of business. So, thank you so much. And I love the stories that you guys all tell. I just, I think they're great. And your history is, is so rich in this area. And, you know, to think how some people can just come up with an idea and there it is, paid for as college commissioner, how about that?
Amazing.
Good job. Thank you so much for all of your work, and now I'm gonna have to have your pierogies, so when do you sell them?
We're, we're working on them right now.
Okay, all right, let me know. Thanks.
You're gonna have them at the rest, you're gonna have?
We have them at the restaurant, at Backstreet's Tiki Bar and Grill, we have them there, and also, we'll be setting them up for Lent for next year, that's our goal.
Yeah, that's a good time.
Been running for Lent, you know?
So, you're gonna call them Helen's Pierogies?
Helen's Pierogies, yes.
That's right. Absolutely, that's good.
That's nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Niteriani?
You're obviously quite the on-top entrepreneur. This is the second or third time you've been in for the Small Business Spotlight. You're doing a great job, and you're what, exactly what Lackawanna County needs to promote the area. You do your shows where you bring people in from all over. I know you and Kurt talking more about some of the events that you plan, and this restaurant will just make it that much better and much, that much easier for you to be able to do a great job doing this. Good luck.
Absolutely, thank you. Like, that's another thing, Jerry, we've been doing, bringing people into the area. We've had a nice dinner show with Neil Diamond last, a couple of weeks ago. In April, we're bringing back Sean Clush, well-known, plays over the world. And people come from different countries, actually to Scranton. People fly in from different countries, from Canada, we have people from Ireland came in to see this guy perform. Every year, we bring in New Jersey, New York, people come from all over the place, get hotel rooms, and they spend money in the area. We're bringing them in, and people have the, I'm trying to bring back the old-time shows, people sit back and relax, have a nice dinner shows.
I graduated with John. John is absolutely self-made, very simple. There's no such thing as Jay-Z tours. There was no such thing. He made it up. He literally made up Jay-Z tours. He's doing it nineteen years. He does concerts, he does dinner concerts, and now he's an entrepreneur, now he owns a business. Now, he had a business, but I knew physically he has a bar and grill, which is family-friendly. And John, it's, it's fabulous. And I didn't realize about the, I, I actually tasted your mother's pierogies when we were kids, but I didn't realize that you were gonna be putting them on the menu. I think that's a great idea. That's gonna be a great draw to, to the, to Backstreets. It really is. Well, let's talk about, what's the address? Anybody wants to come down? What's your time? What time you open at?
We're closed on Mondays right now, we need the one day to try to get caught up. We're open Tuesday through, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 11, Fri, to Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 11. Saturdays and Sundays, we open up at 12 noon. We close at 11 on Saturdays and 9:00 on Sundays.
Fan-friendly for all the football games, all the sporting events coming in?
Absolutely. People coming out with their kids, families, we even have babies come in with the restaurant, you know? People like it, come down, get some meat. There's guys coming down, a group of guys coming down, have a good time, some wings, pizza, we're expanding, expanding the menu out with different types of food and everything, and people are really liking the atmosphere. That's the main thing, which is really nice.
Beautiful. Facebook?
Yeah, we, we're actually gonna be starting a new website. It's gonna be www dot Backstreet's Tiki Bar and Grill. It's in the works, it'll be up, up and coming in the next two weeks. And we also have a Facebook now. We're gonna have some acoustic acts in the place, we're gonna have some events where I wanna spinoff and, and do it as of some fundraisers, like I said, with the veterans, and there's other, other places that I like to be in touch with to try to raise money and help out locally here in the area too.
Can you take takeouts if somebody wants to come and try your wings?
Absolutely.
I know you have some great wings there.
Takeouts there, and that's, that's the thing, that people used to always do takeout because they didn't wanna be around the smoke.
Yeah.
But now, people are coming down, sitting around, having a couple of drinks, and coming in, and we have the recipe. The Reps family is well-known in the area, and they changed the name because we changed the outlook of the bar, but I still, in recognition of them, I still call it Reps Wings for respect for them, because it was them guys who had the recipe there to carry it on, and we were able to get it. We have Sam, Sam Egan, who's the cook there. He's a partner of mine, he's a great guy, he's, he's really good with food, and he also has a nice wing recipe there. And we also got Benny from the Far Tavern's recipe, the old Far Tavern.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
So, Benny gave us his recipe. So, we have three, three different wing recipes there, under one, under one roof, and we have a wing platter with, you get five of each, and that's really going well, everybody likes it.
Congratulations and good luck. It's gonna be great.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Like you said, you're self-made, John. You did this all yourself, congratulations. Do the best. Good job.
Thanks, guys.
Certificate of recognition is awarded to the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Backstreet's Tiki Bar and Grill in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 11th day of December 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Niteriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up. What a great story. Thank you so much for coming in. Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations. Good job. Gary, do your thoughts on Backstreet?
Oh, it's fantastic. The place, Jay-Z tours is outstanding, I'll begin with, and now he has a hub for himself. Wes Grant is happy to have, happy to have Backstreet's Bar and Grill.
Absolutely, the food's great.
That's true. Economic development is our own people, and that's, that's why I like to spotlight every week, so.
So, anyone in the viewing audience, please make it, take your, take your opportunity and get over to Backstreet's and try the food, it's incredible, and the place is beautiful. Did a great job. John, congratulations, you did a really good job on it. And I love the fact the historical bars there, that's over, that's over a hundred years old, the actual shelving and all that stuff, so congratulations. Okay. 19-0320 proclamation presentation. Jack Hens is, Coach, could you come up to the podium?
Well, the pierogies are very good. I like them. I don't know if we should talk about that right now, but they're very good. I wonder if he makes them with the onions or not.
John, onions?
Oh, sauerkraut, actually.
Sauerkraut, yeah.
Very good. Well, once again, I've been teaching in school for thirty years. I enjoyed it. As I've said many times, a good athlete's make you a very good coach. And I've been very honored, of course, to teach in Dunmore High School forty-eight, almost fifty years, and over my, my career, I've taught about sixty years, so teaching's a great profession. You don't make a lot of money at first, but the gratitude you get from the students is outstanding, and I enjoyed myself very much. And I can't thank the administration and the people I work for, most of the student athletes, that, because once again, as I mentioned before, they make you a very good coach. The jumpers out here representing the, the service, we can't thank them enough. They do a great job, and we're very fortunate to have those people. And all my grandson is a lieutenant, he just come back from Afghanistan, and he's right now a second-in-command with the, with the commander, the chief in, in Georgia, and he should be home for Christmas. And my wife always says to him, he has an engineering degree, "Why do you wanna do this?" He said, "Grandma," he said, "this is what I wanna do." He said, "I wanna protect our country." So, gentlemen, I wanna thank you very, very much for that. It's very important. So, once again, I wanna thank you very much for honoring me here today, and I appreciate it so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do, and you're, thank you for your grandson's service. Thank you. Commissioner Cummings.
Hi, thank you so very much, and thank you for coming in, greatly appreciate it. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Niteriani?
I have three brother-in-laws that you coached, the Baumann Boys.
Oh, very good.
They were, they all went on to play college football, and they have nothing but wonderful things to say about you, and I have obviously done a great job coaching, and thank you for everything you've done for the community.
Well, thank you very much, sir, appreciate that.
Coach, you're, you're Dad's son. You really are. Your, your father's impact's so amazing up in Blakely Peckville area, it really is. There's a beautiful statue of his father up there, you know, who he was and what he meant to the community. It's just amazing. And Coach Bazalia, too, came from the same, same era with, alongside of Papa, Papa, Papa Henses, Papa Bear Henses. And when you talk to the people in the Upper Valley, you know what I mean, they, they talk about what a great man he was and what his impact was on their school. And what Valley View is today is something that translated forward into the future because of his dad. And Coach went to Dunmore and, and made his own legacy. And just the impact that you had on all your students alone, whether it was in athletics or not, is amazing. And those young men that went out, you know what I mean, it's, you, you had generations of kids coming back and playing for you, their dads, their grandfathers, like, it really is, it is amazing. And your success is due to hard work. It's not like it just showed up. It's hard work, great staff, you was a great coach, and really good students to be able to tutor and train to be great football players. Congratulations on everything that you've done. State championships, district titles, a little bit of everything. I'm gonna ask, actually ask Gary to say a few words. Gary played football too. Gary, let's say a few words about Coach Henses.
Coach Henses is a legend in Lackawanna County.
Yes.
You know, what he's done at Dunmore has just been.
Amazing.
And my son actually played for him in the Dream Game a couple of years back, and he really enjoyed his experience, and I wanna thank the coach for that, and all he's done[1567.98]
Congratulations on everything that you've done. State championships, district titles, a little bit of everything. I'm gonna ask, actually ask Gary to say a few words, Gary played football, too, Gary, let's say a few words about Coach Henses.
Coach Henses is a legend in Lackawanna County.
Yes.
You know, what he's done at Dunmore has just been phenomenal.
Amazing.
And my son actually played for him in the Dream Game a couple of years back, and he really enjoyed his experience, and I want to thank the coach for that, and all he's done for the whole county and Dunmore in particular.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
He really does, it matters so much, just like you said, you mean, these things that we're talking about, everything has such an impact in a drought or a community, and your being a coach up there made great citizens, that's what it comes down to, you know what I mean? You have good, you have really good parents, you have a great coach who actually is there, and to a lot of these kids, you were second dad, so congratulations on all your successes, and congratulations on all your students. We have a proclamation here today. Whereas on April 30th, 2019, legendary Dunmore High School head coach, Jack Hens is retired from teaching and coaching after a career of educating students in the classroom and on the football field, whereas Coach Henses began his career as an assistant coach at Blakely High School for his father, John Papa Bear Henses, before becoming a first head football coach at Wyoming Area High School in 1966. After four years in Wyoming Area, he took over Dunmore High School in 1971, and remained as a fixture on the Buck sidelines for the next 48 years. Whereas, in more than a half a century of coaching football, Coach Henses won 444 games, second most ever in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. He brought fame and ovariety to Dunmore High School while winning a PIA double A, PI one A championship in 1989, and reaching the final game in state championship 2007, 2012, 2014, and not to mention all the district titles and everything else, and Big 11 stuff along the way. Whereas, in celebration of his retirement, John, Jack Henses is being recognized and honored for his commitment and education to the youth of Dunmore High School, serving the Lackawanna County community as a whole. He has been a humble and respected role model for all educators in Lackawanna County for 50-plus years and coaches. Now therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Notterianni, Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim, on behalf of the 214,000 citizens, December 11th, 2019, is Jack Henses Day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to come forward?
Hi, thank you, I like your tone.
Yeah, great tie. Great to see Coach.
Coach, thank you too. How are you?
Actually, Kevin Clark.
Yes.
His manager. He taught our son.
Everybody look here and smile. Couple, step in. Good. All right, here we go, everyone just smile. Couple.
Speed and agility.
Very good, thank you.
Congratulations. 19-0321, check presentation for Coaches Versus Cancer, the three-on-three basketball tournament. Ricky, would you like to get everybody up here, we'll say a few words. This is a huge event, I know Ricky's very much involved, too, and it really shows, and you know, our three-on-three tournament is like a great opportunity to come out and see like Wyoming Avenue really alive in the summer. What does it start, Saturday and Sunday?
We start Friday afternoon, and run Friday and Saturday, Sunday's usually a rain day, usually the last weekend in July, we've been, we've been running it the last couple of years.
Thousands of people downtown Scranton, it's in, it's basically almost a three-block area, and what are the age groups, how does it go?
Age group starts in third grade, I believe, and runs all the way through an open division, which is adults, and we've had upwards of 75 to 80 teams the last couple of years consistently, with over 300 participants, and you know, on a Friday night, it's pretty neat to come downtown and see basketball being played, not only on Wyoming Avenue, but all the parents and grandparents and siblings that are there around, it's really a neat atmosphere right here on Wyoming Avenue in front of the Government Center.
It's just another great draw to downtown Scranton.
It really is.
And showing what we have going on Lackawanna County Government, because that three-on-three tournament was made in Lackawanna County Government.
Yeah, it's been, it's been running for at least 25 years at different locations, and we've been downtown now the last six or seven years, and the last six years, we've partnered with the Coaches Versus Cancer, as they are our charity, to donate some money to them, and we've donated about $1,500 each year for the last six years, I think we're over 7,500 right now. Kurt's standing behind me, too, because the Visitors Bureau is our main sponsor this year, and a great partner with us, and not only are we giving funds to the Coaches Versus Cancer, but also each high school team, boys and girls in Lackawanna County will get a donation of $125 for their booster club, for their support of the tournament every year. So, the 10 high schools in Lackawanna County will, each of their teams, boys and girls, will get a donation.
Eric, you know what's amazing to me, you know, as much as there's parents, family, and friends on it, like everyone, I mean, if you want to come out and see some really great basketball games, I mean, really, some rough, tough basketball games, you can come downtown and see them for three days, and there's a lot of people that are down there that have no one involved in these games, and they're sitting there watching, and like I said, there, how many courts do we have running at once?
We've been running, we've run in 10 courts.
10 courts at once.
There's some great competition at each level, and even, even just the local guys that just show up to play, you know, down at their local playgrounds show up to play, you know, that they're not really organized, but I point back, we have a group that comes from Maryland every year, from Baltimore, Maryland, an adult team that plays, and they're the first ones to call me usually in March or April, what's the date, we want to start making our plans, and we don't have as many out of town as we'd like, we're trying to push that more, but we do have people from out of Lackawanna County that come and play.
Have Kurt showcase that, the Visitors Center, we can go down there.
Absolutely.
How do they, how do they do, actually, how does that team do?
I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to, but they compete.
Oh, they compete, okay.
Yeah, they love to come up and spend, and spend two nights, you know, here in Scranton, in Lackawanna County, and play some basketball.
Come on up and enjoy yourself and spend some money in our community, it's great. I'd like to also thank our Parks and Recreation Director, Deputy Director, they get all of our basketball courts and everything ready to go, and I think you do, you line the streets, too?
Yeah, absolutely, Mark and his staff were a great help this year, they really became more involved, and really did a great job this year.
Kurt, you guys, anybody like to say a few words real quick?
I honestly just want to recognize the great work that Rick does on this.
Rick does a great job, doesn't he?
Appreciate it. We get involved, and we're proud to be involved with this project every year, but the work that Rick does, he works tirelessly on this, and realistically, it goes because of him.
He does a lot of different things that are just outside of the realm, like, I know it's part of it, but he...
No question, I've been involved with this project since before, I was with the Visitors Bureau, we used to host the three-on-three at the stadium where I was.
Park lot, yeah.
I used to construct the baskets and paint the court, so I know how big and important an event this is to the community, and honestly, they wouldn't happen without his hard work, he really goes above and beyond for it.
Great job, Ricky.
Coach Kettle, let's talk a little bit about Coaches Versus Cancer.
Coach, thanks for coming out today.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Coaches Versus Cancer in Northeast Pennsylvania, we really want to thank the county and everyone involved for continuing to support the mission of the American Cancer Society. Coaches Versus Cancer, if you're not aware, is a national program, which is a partnership between the National Association of Basketball Coaches and the American Cancer Society, society, excuse me, and it's mainly done on the Division One level. 13 years ago, when I was the head coach at Lackawanna Trail High School, we had a young man whose father was battling cancer, I spoke to the family, and I saw a game on TV, and I said, we should have a Coaches Versus Cancer game, we passed a hat at a game, and we raised $1,500. This year, we celebrate our 13th year, and we're gonna close in on the $2 million mark.
Wow, congratulations.
So, thank you, and it's really, it's a tribute to our community, Lackawanna County, all the surrounding counties, all the student athletes, their families, the businesses, the sponsors, the coaches, of course, and the student athletes, to be able to do that. We are the largest Coaches Versus Cancer High School campaign in the country that is not affiliated with a Division One men's or women's basketball team.
Wow.
So, we're really proud of our efforts, we're proud of our community, and we really appreciate the three-on-three and their continued support. As a dad and a coach, I want to thank the Lackawanna County for continuing to have the three-on-three, my children playing it, we love the weekend, it's phenomenal, and hopefully we can continue to have that great event and do so many great things out of it by supporting so many great causes, so, thank you very much.
Good job, Coach. Mark, will you say?
I wasn't expecting to talk, but anyway. Ricky sets everything up, Ricky starts from the beginning, he gives us all the brochures, we go around to the schools, try to get everything motivated for the kids to be here. We do set up the area down, down here at the 100 block of Wyoming Avenue, and it sort of, after, after so long, it practically runs itself, but we're there to help him whenever he needs, so, he does a great job, thank you very much.
Congratulations, everyone, especially you, Ricky, great job, great job. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, Ricky, you know, I'm not a big sports enthusiast, but my son is, and Rick has worked with my son over the years in Old Forge, and he's terrific.
We need to have John get a team next year.
Well, yeah, I know, he wants to, he comes down and plays with JCC, too, so, I know he's always down here playing, but, you know, I appreciate the work he's due, because it does shape these young men and women, and, you know, it's, it's something that, my kids were always involved in sports, so, thank you for all the work that you've done with them, all of them, I think you...
You're welcome.
Coached all of them. Well, not the twins, but the other two, the younger ones. So, thanks for all your work, and very proud of you, and thank you, Kurt, and thank you to Parks and Rec, thank you very much, and, and Coach...
Coach Kettle from Scranton Prep.
Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Coach Versus Cancer, yeah.
To improve the use of our community and keep them in check, and, you know, always being busy doing something other than causing problems, so, thank you very much, I appreciate your time and your efforts that you do here.
Commissioner Notterianni?
All of you obviously do a great job, and I'd just like to thank you all for your hard work, thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll do the presentation.
You got the check.
Congratulations, guys.
Fran can take a picture.
Oh, yeah, Fran's here, gee, for a sec. Fran, you're out of retirement. Fran, you're out of retirement. Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you very much.
I just want to move this out of the way. And the water.
This is the Christmas card, right here. Here we go. One, two, three, two, three, two, three. All smiles looking at me, one, two, three. Good.
Congratulations, Coach. You didn't miss a step there.
Thanks. Thanks for putting this shirt on.
You know, as much as it's an athletic event, it just gives so much back, you know, Coaches Versus Cancer, because there's so many, I mean, it's horrible to say, there's not a person in this room that hasn't known someone or known someone who died from cancer, and Coaches Versus Cancer helps so much to try to rid the world of this horrible outrageous disease. Before we go any further, I just want, Mark, could you pan the room over where the pictures are, over here? When we came over here, there was so much going on, it was so busy, the last thing I wanted to do was have maintenance trying to put up our pictures and different things, because we had so much going on in different departments, and we're still troubleshooting a lot of other things, you know, until everything, I mean, the first year, anybody that's been in construction or built a building understands a lot of things you have to make sure is done, and we're still doing it at this time. But we had an opportunity to put up our 40 municipalities, these used to be over in our old conference room, and these represent each municipality, a building or something that means something inside of their municipality in Lackawanna County, like, you know, as much as you, we're Lackawanna County Government, well, we represent those 40 municipalities, so if anybody wants to take a look at them before they leave, take a look at them today as a picture of each municipality, and we had them over in the old conference room. And we also had an opportunity to put up some of the other pictures from around Lackawanna County, you know, so it started to really come together. The conference table was painted by our maintenance staff, so it has like a teak black type of color to it, and the podium itself, so everything matches up with all the woodwork. So, you know, everything has basically come together for the conference room, I think we still have to put the TV in, but that's about it. So, if anybody wants to take a look at the end of the meeting, they can take a look at each one of the municipalities. At this time, I'd like to ask Bob Skavakinas to get up and say a few words about the Rocky Glen Advisory Committee that we're looking at for the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to our Commissioner Board for inviting me, giving me the opportunity to come and address your group in addition to our audience and our viewing audience as well. I'm gonna talk about, briefly about probably a subject that most people are familiar with, and hopefully have a lot of good memories of, and I think it's something that always just makes people feel good with the nostalgia factor, but Rocky Glen Park. If I had a look around the audience, I'm assuming most people are familiar with Rocky Glen and what it meant to our area. Just a brief history of Rocky Glen, it was established in 1886, and it closed in 1987, so it had a 101-year history in northeastern PA. It had such a role in our area with the ethnic days, the major concert acts, and I'm gonna go all the way back, and Commissioner, you pointed out about like the historical photos and everything, but, I mean, one little piece of information I like to share about Rocky Glen is that in 1939, there was a singer there by the name of Frank Sinatra, so it tells you again how important Rocky Glen meant, not only to our community, but on a national level. The purpose of me being here is I'm gonna talk a little bit more about Rocky Glen. And 11 years ago, I worked with the Lackawanna Historical Society, and we got a state marker, those blue and gold markers that you see throughout our state, and I was told by an elected official from the state that that was probably one of the largest attendant marker ceremonies, dedication ceremonies, in the history of our state. So it kind of told me a little bit about how important Rocky Glen was to our area. With that, you know, I've heard a lot of good stories through the years from people, and I thought we needed to document these stories, so what I ended up doing was, 10 years ago, I did a documentary on Rocky Glen Park, which aired on our local PBS station, I followed that up five years later with the sequel, Return to Rocky Glen Park. And again, it's telling me again how important and how much the nostalgia and how much people loved Rocky Glen Park. I'm currently working on possibly a part three, which I'm proud to say, you know, a trilogy would be nice to do of Rocky Glen Park and documentaries. I guess what I'm gonna lead up to then is a little bit on my background, I was appointed by the governor to the PHMC, which is the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission, so I look at the historical perspective of Rocky Glen, and I'm also involved in some of our local community organizations through the last 10-plus years or so, Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, the County Arts and Culture Department, and I've served as a volunteer there, and a couple of other organizations and everything. I have a couple of photos, I'll pass them around later, and it shows the attendance for different events that I've done over the last 10 years or so at Rocky Glen, as far as lectures go, just presentations and things, and usually what we end up getting is several hundred people coming out at a time for these lectures, presentations about Rocky Glen. So again, what it tells me a little bit about is that there is a big interest still in Rocky Glen Park. I want to congratulate our Commissioners and past Commissioners as well, in addition to other elected officials, because I think you've led Lackawanna County into such great development, whether it's the rail riders, and what montage has happened up there with the shops, the different things that have happened throughout our area for the development of the tourist attractions, of course, Montage Mountain developing and all those other attractions, but the one thing that we're missing is something called an amusement park. Is that something feasible? I think it's something feasible that we might be able to look at, and especially when you look at the nostalgia, and I keep using that term, but when you talk about Rocky Glen, you're looking at two generations, possibly three, you're looking at our senior citizens who went there as younger people and remember how great Rocky Glen was. They pass that information and that family fun stories on to their children and grandchildren now that say, what was it like to experience a park like Rocky Glen in our area? So, the reason, again, I'm here at the Commissioners, I'm here to ask, I'd like to form an advisory committee to see if there's a potential to establish something like a Rocky Glen amusement type park in Lackawanna County. Obviously, I'd like to work with our County Convention Visitor Bureau, I'd like to work with the Parks and Recreation Department, I'd like to work with our Arts and Culture Department, and probably a few other organizations out there in our county level, and also looking at private industry as far as seeing what interest there might be in dealing with other amusement parks that are somewhat like Canobles or something on that level. So I guess the reason I'm appealing here is I'd like to see if the county would be interested in, I guess, say, helping me go along with this idea, as far as giving me some of the resources to reach out to the county government levels to see how we could put this together, but I also want to reach out to the general public, and hopefully people watching this will say, wow, I remember those great times at Rocky Glen Park, I want to be a part of this advisory committee, or this interest in trying to spur not only economic development in the form of an amusement park type situation, but also just the nostalgia, the history, and just the good times and the good family memories that were created at one time. I see like the county fair, that was so successful, and I mean, that kind of spurs me to say, why can't we continue to try new initiatives and new ideas? So, if the county government is interested in helping me work with this in addition to our audience, our constituents, your constituents, if you want to call it that, I'd love to move forward with a Rocky Glen Advisory Committee.
Commissioner Cummings?
First, I'm so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
And I can't believe you're standing here, so, don't you do enough.
Well, Commissioner, you just mentioned my loss, my mom passed away two weeks ago, and I like to say that my mom was my inspiration for saying to me always, get involved in your community, make your community a better place, be active, so to answer your question, mom would probably say, go ahead, do another project, so, yes, I would like to proceed if, you know, everyone agrees that this is something feasible.
You know, you are one person that I had absolutely no problem voting for on the Boards and Authorities, on some of the boards, that you've obviously served multiple years on, and this is all volunteer, so, thank you for your service to the residents of Lackawanna County and beyond, through all the different organizations you actively volunteer on. You just don't volunteer and never show up, you actually show up for everything and do everything that you can to help that specific board or authority or committee do what has to be done to be effective.
And that's easy to do, because Lackawanna County I believe in, it's a great county, you guys do great work up here, and our county is wonderful.
Well, I'm glad you see it that way, but I do, too, I see the people that way, but it's a very noble thing that you do, and you don't get enough recognition, the people that are on the Boards and Authorities don't get enough recognition for all the work that they do do, because usually have a handful of people that actually do all the stuff, and then there's others that, you know, that they can never say that about you about, because you are extremely effective in all that you do, and I really do appreciate you volunteering for all this. Is there, one question I do have, is would there be any funding that you'd be looking for to perform this specific task?
I would probably like to look at the resources as far as being able to go to these different county departments to ask for their input. Financial resources, possibly some seed money to host, whether it's just getting some food together, some refreshments, or, you know, someone be willing to even just donate those things. I'm not sure to what extent it would take at that point, so at this point, I don't believe that I would be looking for major money other than just some seed money, again, just to kind of get the project going and things like that, but again, that could be achieved possibly through just the county government offices.
So it could be through in-kind, is what you, okay.
That's a possibility as well.
Okay, so, that's what I always look at, is money, you know, is it gonna cost us anything, so, you know, that was the answer I was looking for, otherwise, I know that you'll do a tremendous job if this does come to fruition, and, you know, again, thank you for taking on yet another form of, you know, volunteer job, so thank you so much for everything you do for the citizens of Lackawanna County.
Thank you, well, when you believe in your community, you don't mind doing things.
That's great, what a great attitude.
Commissioner Notterianni?
I'd certainly like to speak with you more about this project.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's got some merit, and we'll talk about it again, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
This, actually show my grandma's basement right here. That's probably from the 1940s, and that's on Rocky Glen, you can tell by the swimsuit and stuff like that. This was something that I would have liked to have been involved in, like you said, but our term is coming to an end. I always thought that we have Canobles right down the road in Ellesburg, you know, if Rocky Glen could have survived to have been around, I think that it would have re-flourished, it would have grown again, I really do. I really do. Especially you have, we have the concerts on, we have Live Nations on the mountain. We have Montage Mountain for skiing and for water park in the summer. We have the baseball, we have movies. Everything is right there. Like, you could literally stay at a hotel and stay up on the mountain for an easy, between the mountain and Rocky Glen, for an easy three or four days and enjoy the parks, enjoy the swim parks, enjoy a baseball game. Like you said, you know, I mean, Rocky Glen has great memories. And I think about my mom telling me about when she was a kid, that they would take the Lurie Line down to Rocky Glen Park to go down for the day. And I remember going down to Rocky Glen Park, my cousins all worked at Haddon Craftsman, and they used to have like a Saturday, it was like Haddon Craftsman Employee Day. And it was a ball. It was a ball. There were all great memories. They were all family fun memories that lasts a lifetime. And I think that of everything we have, we have a lot of great reasons to come to Lackawanna County. I truly believe that if the park had survived, that it would have been flourishing at this point. And I think it's very much worthwhile looking into it. And I'd love to be part of it because I think it really, really matters in Lackawanna County. And it would just be another feather on our cap for a big draw and for people like Kurt Camoni to fill up all of our hotel rooms and everything else. But I think it's a great idea, and I love the idea. And I think it can be a lot of fun trying to get to that point, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your, I believe you volunteered to be a part of this as well.
Yes.
And then also, of course, to our viewing audience and everything. So I assume that anyone interested in getting more involved in this Rocky Glen Advisory Group to, I guess, get in touch with our county commissioner's office and just let them know that you are interested. I'm assuming I'm correct in saying this, so.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you again, everyone.
Thanks so much.
Donnie, where do we go? I think we're all on board for the idea of doing the committee part.
We can set it up, Commissioner. I mean, it would just be an advisory committee, so it's not going to, you know.
Yeah. It's like the committee we had when we started with the fair, didn't, it became an authority, but it was just a, it was an experimental type of committee to look in to see if it was worthwhile.
We can set it up. I believe we set that up through a resolution. We can set it up through a resolution if you want or something and go from there.
And the board members.
And they probably work with our Economic Development Office, because I mean, if you're looking to bring a park in, it would be, you know, jobs and everything else for the county and people that work here, so we probably work through our Economic Development Office going forward with that.
Could I make a motion today after we give the opportunity to speak if we wanted to or no? Or should we just wait?
Well, how you want, we can, we'll look into it, we'll look into it.
We'll look into it, okay. Okay, Bob.
Thank you.
Reach out to Attorney Fredrickson. Thank you, their memories are great, all of them.
Thank you again to our three commissioners and Attorney Fredrickson.
Thank you. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only? Okay, resolutions nineteen dash zero three one nine.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers two nine four one four four through two nine five one zero nine inclusive totaling two million thirty-four thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling four million nine hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred eight dollars and ten cents.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, nineteen dash zero three zero eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance to safety public officials bonding requirements. Whereas, on November twenty-third, twenty-eleven, Act two oh six became effective immediately authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance covering county officers and employees, replacing prior requirements that certain individual officers of the county have separate bonds. Whereas pursuant to subsection one one three zero A of the act, which requires the County Board of Commissioners as the governing body of the County of Lackawanna, PA, to establish a procedure by which it shall annually determine the form and required amount of required security that will be reasonably sufficient to protect against the risk of loss in compliance with this subsection of the act. Whereas subsection one one three oh B of the act permits the County Board of Commissioners to instruct their county risk manager to compile and submit information relevant to the determination of an amount of required security under subsection A. Whereas section one one two nine of the act requires that the form of a blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the act shall be approved by the governing body of the county after review by the county solicitor in consolidation with the county risk manager. Be it resolved that the county shall hereby adopt the following procedure for compliance with the provision of the Pennsylvania Act one oh six. Number one, the county risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners prior to the close of every calendar year as to the amount of security that the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year and to provide the information as set forth below to enable the Board of Commissioners to place into force the blanket bond or crime insurance required by the act for the succeeding year. Number two, in the course of performing the duties assigned here under number one above, the county risk manager shall confer with the county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the act. Number three, the county risk manager will obtain comprehensive proposals from the county's designated broker of record for the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the act. Number four, upon receipt and review of the competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record and at least two weeks prior to the close of every calendar year, the county risk manager shall present to the Board of Commissioners for its consideration and approval the form and amount of required security, together with their recommendations, as to the blanket bond or crime insurance that will satisfy the requirements set forth in the act. Here to speak on this resolution is our insurance and risk manager, Deputy Director Rick Jones.
Good morning, Rick.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. Your consideration this morning is resolution nineteen dash three oh eight. If approved, this resolution will enable Lackawanna County to continue for the ninth year in a row to be in compliance with Act one oh six of twenty-eleven, which took effect on November twenty-third, twenty-eleven. Act one oh six allows for counties to purchase a blanket bond with a faithful performance of duties endorsement to cover all of its elected and appointed public officials, excluding the county treasurer, who by law must post his or her own bond. Our blanket bond covers the election board, the pension board, the prison board, the salary board, and the county fair board and authority as well. The blanket bond includes crime and employee dishonesty coverage, covering all of the county's twelve-hundred employees. The blanket bond is posted annually with the Pennsylvania Department of State through the county recorder of deeds office. Our county's current blanket bond has a two-million-dollar limit. The annual premium is only five thousand and forty-nine dollars, or approximately four dollars per county employee. Note that if the county had to obtain separate bonds for each of the above referenced five boards, those bonds would have minimum premiums of at least two thousand dollars a year, which is a ten-thousand-dollar savings to the county. Our blanket bond replaces antiquated miscellaneous bonding limits previously required of public officials prior to two thousand and eleven. County commissioners were only required to individually post a seventy-five-hundred-dollar bond prior to two thousand and eleven. As you could see, that would be woefully inadequate for all of the fiduciary responsibilities that a county commissioner has. In accordance with the provisions of Act one oh six, I'm recommending that the County Board of Commissioners grant approval for Lackawanna County to continue to post a public officials' bond with limits of two million dollars with the Commonwealth of PA effective January first, two thousand and twenty.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Jones? Okay, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the counties to obtain a blanket bond of crime insurance to set aside the public officials bonding requirements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero three zero nine.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution requesting PennDOT to conduct a study. A resolution of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners requesting PennDOT to conduct a study to determine the feasibility of establishing a fixed route public transportation service in Lackawanna County. Whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners believes that it is in the best interest of the Lackawanna County to serve the area to study the feasibility of establishing a fixed route public transportation demonstration service for Jessup Business Park, Valley View Business Park, and Mid Valley Park. And whereas, a fixed route public transportation system provides regularly scheduled general public transportation according to published schedules along with designated routes with specific stopping points for the taking on and discharging of passengers. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners desires to request the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to conduct a study to examine the feasibility of establishing a fixed route public transportation demonstration service for Jessup Business Park, Valley View Business Park, and Mid Valley Park. And whereas, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation has the capability and experience in undertaking such a study and in providing a report detailing the feasibility of such a demonstration of the service. Now whereas, be it resolved by authority of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, that said board hereby requests PennDOT to conduct a study to determine the feasibility of establishing a fixed route public transportation demonstration project for Lackawanna County in order to create a cohesive and cost-efficient public transit system for employees of and visitors to Jessup Business Park, Valley View Business Park, and Mid Valley Park. And that said board fully supports the feasibility study to be conducted and evaluated by PennDOT and understands that local matching funds equal to fifteen percent of the annual operating budget shall be required from the service area of a three-year pilot project is approved by PennDOT and Lackawanna County. And here to speak on this resolution is Executive Director of COLTS, Bob Fume.
Thank you.
Good morning, Bob. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this resolution will be, serve as part of an application that COLTS will submit to PennDOT, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, for a demonstration project. So PennDOT will do a feasibility study, it'll take a few months, and then hopefully approve our grant. And what this grant will do is, as the resolution reads, we will establish a route that'll service those industrial parks. And this grant will pay eighty-five percent of our cost of running that service to those parks for three years. So eighty-five percent for three years, and if that route is successful, after those three years, PennDOT will build into our COLTS operating budget sixty-five percent of what that route costs. So it'll actually continue past the three years at sixty-five percent. COLTS will not have to foot the whole bill for the route. So, and as the ridership increases through that route, we will get also more operating money from PennDOT.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Fume?
Is there any other costs associated for the businesses that, at this point, or no? Because I know we talked about that.
So we've been working with the chamber, and the chamber is going to work with businesses because it's, the trend across Pennsylvania and the state is when you're establishing some new service, especially in business parks, you try to get some kind of a buy-in from the businesses. So we are working with the chamber on that and the businesses, whether it's to buy passes for their employees or contribute a certain amount, but it's, eighty-five percent will be paid by PennDOT.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad to work with yous on this project. Thank you for all the time you've put into it so far.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terian?
I'm good.
I'd like to just say that this is a great opportunity for a lot of the citizens that just, just don't drive. A lot of them just don't drive, a lot of them can't afford to drive. And it's give those businesses an opportunity to actually have them be dropped off basically in the close vicinity of their business. Right now, they'd have to like, basically go up the mountain. It's like a mile, it'd be like a mile walk up a steep hill. So I think that this would be a great study to see if this is something that can be actually put in as a full-time route for you. And I truly believe that this is going to open the door for a lot of people that probably might not even take a job because they would know they'd have to scale the hill to be able to get to work.
Right.
This would be able to get dropped off in the morning and get picked up in the afternoon and get you home. And that's what our transportation is, public transportation. We actually have Pat Williams, who is part of the public transportation. Thank you for your service. But these are the things that really matter to us in Lackawanna County, and I think that this route can be very successful.
I think so, too.
And I think it's going to draw a lot more workers up there, and it's going to give the businesses a lot more opportunities to get the employees they want, so.
God bless you.
Thank you.
It is something we've been talking about for a while now. I mean, this is something we've met on a couple occasions, so, you know, I mean, it's an ongoing conversation that we finally got to go ahead with the study, though.
The routes have changed numerous times in the last few years I've been here, but this is another one that like, there's never been anything going up onto that mountain. There's never been any busting, so.
Well, for those that paid attention, knew what we were doing, you know.
Yeah, at this point, you know, I mean, there's a lot of businesses up there. There was only so many, but now, there's an absolute, there's a need.
It's growing. There's definitely a need.
There's a need, this study will show it, and if it works, then that will be part of all the COLTS routes. If it doesn't, it doesn't, but I think it's going to.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I think it'll work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. I'd like to make a motion to request the PennDOT to conduct a study. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Nineteen dash zero three one zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is the acceptance of a comprehensive opioid abuse grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the comprehensive opioid abuse site-based program grant funding from the U.S. Department of Justice for the years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. Here to speak on the resolution is District Attorney Mark Powell.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. I'm proud to announce that the District Attorney's Office applied for and successfully received a nine hundred thousand dollar grant to aid law enforcement. This is new money, federal money dedicated to our community to address the needs in our community, to determine what's working on behalf of law enforcement to address this opioid crisis and what's not. It allows the District Attorney's Office to create four new positions, which will further boost the economy here. So I respectfully ask that the Commissioners accept nineteen dash three ten to further help all of us do something to reduce the amount of opioid deaths.
Absolutely. Does the board have any questions?
I just am happy to see this come through at the federal level, so, you know, thanks for applying, Mark, and great job.
Commissioner O'Terian?
No, I'm good.
I'd just like to say that, you know, we've had, Mark, you lived through it, we've lived through it, so many losses, so many families, so many broken hearts, and I think this nine hundred thousand, you'll be able to put it to good use to try to curb and try to help stop this. So congratulations, we will be voting in the affirmative on this today. I'd like to make a motion, acceptance of the comprehensive opioid abuse grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Nineteen dash zero three one one.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is accepting the quote from ESNS. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the purchase proposed quote from ESNS Election Systems and Software for the purchase of new global ballot scanning hardware and does hereby enter into a software license and extended[1640.91] hardware warranty and software license and maintenance and support service agreement. Here to speak on this resolution is our Director of Elections, Marion Medalis, along with our Director of Purchasing, Joe Waxler.
Good morning, Marion and Joe. How are you this morning? Happy Wednesday.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm recommending that the Commissioners approve the quote from ESNS for the purchase of the county's voting equipment. ESNS is currently the voting vendor that the county uses. What we're planning on, what I'm recommending for purchase is the DS200, which is a precinct-based scanner and vote tabulator that supports paper-based voting. The system will be basically the same as we're using now. The voters will get a paper ballot, fill in the oval, and drop it in the scanner. The Express Vote uses touchscreen technology that produces a paper voter summary card that provides voters to review their selections before submitting for tabulation. We're required to have one ADA-compliant voting system in each polling place. So, with that in mind, there should be minimal training for the voters. We will have to obviously train our poll workers, but again, the system will be paper-based.
Does the board have any questions?
I just want to thank Marion for all her work on this and all the Board of Commissioners for the work they've done on reviewing all these machines because, you know, it was, you know, a long process this past couple of months, and we saw a couple, I know you had a couple orientations, I didn't go to the second one because I didn't feel I needed to, but thank you for your work and for getting us a paper ballot again, and not going with these digital machines that everybody's been having so many problems with, like down in Northampton County. That was a mess, and I don't even know what, I guess they're not going to do anything, but that was just voter suppression by, I've never seen anything so bad in all my life where they can't, they don't even know if the votes were accurate. It's concerning to me only with the ADA-compliant machine then, because that is digital, and that prints out a ballot after the fact. So, just for the voting public, so they know, like, some of these machines weren't recording appropriately if there was a Democrat, Republican, if they were on both tickets. So, it was something to that effect, correct, Marion, how it wasn't recognizing?
I believe the issue in Northampton County, they purchased a full-face
Yes.
voting system, which we are not even, that wasn't even being considered.
Yeah.
And it also may have been a coding error. I'm not 100% sure myself.
Yeah, so, but some of the changes that have come down with this, I believe you were talking about, there's a lot, but the one is, is there no longer will be straight-party voting, correct?
That is correct, and that'll be in effect for the 2020 November election.
Not the primary?
Not in the, no, only, the straight party was only in November, on the November ballot.
No, I know, but the machines will be available for the primary for us, right?
Well, it's going into effect for 2020 for the November election, though.
Oh, so our new machines won't be here until the general election?
We're going to use the new voting equipment for the primary of 2020.
That's what I was asking, okay.
But straight-party voting isn't in effect until the November election, but they're
Yeah, well, yeah, you can't do straight-party voting in a primary anymore.
Correct, you cannot.
So, yeah, that wouldn't matter.
But again, part of the election reform, that's going away.
Yeah, no straight-party voting. That's a good thing. People actually have to fill in the circles, so. But the best part, and you kept your word to us, and you kept the paper ballot, and it's in your hands, you fill in the circles, the machine doesn't do it for you, a machine that could switch to some other thing because it's not coded right. So, it's paper ballot for the people, and we kept it that way. And thank you so very much, I greatly appreciate your work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner O'Terian?
I'm good.
I'd like to thank you, Marion, I know there's a lot of work involved in this, and I actually liked what we had already, but I know the state told us mandated we have to do this. So, I know that you picked out the best machine that's pretty much like the one that we're currently using, and which we had really no issues with.
That's right.
But, you know, the state asked for us to do this, so we're here, and we're going to make sure of it because we're getting a great savings on it as long as we vote before December is over, so.
Correct.
Ellie, thank you, Joe, for looking into what the best value was for all of us.
Yes, Commissioner, that's why this is very important for us to participate in both the federal and the statewide reimbursement program that this is completed by the end of this year. That's why this vote is important today.
Absolutely.
And Joe, can you just confirm with the Commissioners that ENS is a CoStarz vendor, and we are compliant with all purchasing requirements of the state?
Yes, ESS operates under a CoStarz contract number 039003. CoStarz is a program that allows us to buy at a guaranteed price. Actually, this price is better than the CoStarz price. So, it's, it gives us the information that we have reliable pricing for this particular contract.
Nice. Okay. Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion accepting the quotes from ENS. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks for coming, Marion. Thank you, Joe. 19-0312.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is awarding an arts and culture mini-grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award an arts and culture mini-grant to the following community organizations. Old Forge Borough, $500 for the annual Snow Forge Event Entertainment and Children's Events. Here to speak on this resolution is our Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning, Commissioners, and happy holidays. This event actually took place this past weekend, I believe, but we couldn't get on the agenda, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to Old Forge. They've really built up this event, people love it, you know, people that live in other parts of the county attend it, so it was a really great event, and we're just happy that they're applying to us for this.
There's always something great going on, you just have to look for it. I really mean it. And that has grown, that's a great event down there.
Yeah, it really is. So, and I just want to give one short plug to Festival of Trees. The county-sponsored holiday events are not over. We had the Winter Market last weekend, but this weekend, we kick off our annual exhibit of trees that community organizations decorate, and then the proceeds go to Toys for Tots. So, we have the preview party Friday night at the marketplace at Steamtown, $15. All money goes to Toys for Tots, and then the exhibit will be up free for a month till January 12th. So, thank you.
Very nice. I'd like to just say that the Winter Market this past week was great. You had a Santa Claus, Santa Claus was great, second to none.
He was.
And the weather was incredible. First Friday was incredible. It was 40-some degrees. We had the Voice of the Valley there, the chorus, free bags for anybody that went into the marketplace.
Unico.
Free, with Unico, with, yeah, with cookies and hot chocolate, and free carriage rides. It was great. Oh, it's expired, this, last but not least, Free Pitcher with Santa Claus in the Globe. So, you know, I mean, it all fit together really well. It really did. And, I mean, this draws thousands, I know it's done on First Friday, but this event itself, especially being over here, first inside of the Globe the first two years, and now the last two years outside, it's just a great draw. For, you know, for years, I mean, this street could have tumbleweeds going down it five years ago. There was nothing going on. Everything was for rent, for lease, and for sale. I mean, we took a building that was never going to be sold, and people thought, oh, it can be sold, yeah, it's going to be sold. It could never be made into apartments because it would be like being on, does anybody ever go on a cruise? Anybody go on a cruise and get an inside cabin? You don't have a window. It's very difficult, I mean, no one wants to live inside that. That's how big this building is. You couldn't make this into all apartments. And nobody was running to come and buy this building. So, with us buying this building and all the great things that we bring together with this building, downstairs, too, we, I mean, we have our blood drives, we have, I mean, our reception areas open for anybody in the public that wants to have something, you know, downstairs. You know, I mean, that's what our reception area is for. This is the citizens' building. But this marketplace really means something, and it really brings alive the aura of what this building was. This was a great department store with great memories, kids looking in the windows, looking at the toys around Christmas, just that feeling. And we try to bring it back for those three days every year. You mean, this is the citizens' building, and that marketplace, I think, is second to none. I really believe in it. And thank you, Maureen, for the great job you've done. And like you said, this great, this weekend, great weekend, great weather, great opportunity to make family memories happen. Great weekend.
Thank you for that. And just one more short plug, we have so many great county employees, and I just want to thank all, I don't want to list them because I know the meeting's going on, but
A lot of people, lots, lots.
But every, almost every department makes that event work, so I just wanted to express that to the people that...
Everyone's involved in it, it really is. It's, as much as this is a community's event, this is Lackawanna County government's event, and it's all, it's all the employees, they're all involved.
Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Commissioner Cummings, I know you like the marketplace.
I do, and unfortunately, I had to not be there this week, and sorry, I missed everything, but.
Sorry, you've been very supportive of it, so thank you.
Yes, I do, and I am, and I appreciate all your work and all the employees' work that were available, and I wish I could have been there, but, thank you again, Maureen, thank you for everything.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Good job, Maureen.
Great job, Maureen.
Shy today, which is unusual.
Great job.
Thank you. All right.
I'd like to make a motion awarding arts and culture mini-grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0313.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and whereas, the Board of Commissioners is interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods since they are the foundation for families and community values. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to: Street Cats and Dogs Incorporated from Scranton, total project cost $2,389. Amount from the CRP program, $2,389. Volunteer Hose Company of Troop, project cost of $10,000. Amount from CRP program is $2,500. This is for the station renovations, including flooring and windows. The American Legion Post 306 in Taylor, meeting hall floor improvements, project cost is $10,399. Amount from the CRP program is $2,500. Here to speak on this resolution is Acting Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioner. This resolution is approving three community reinvest projects totaling $7,389, focusing on revitalization improvements of communities and neighborhoods. This is our 20th round of the program, and the overall public-private investment since its inception is over $8 million. The county has invested 2.7 million into the community reinvest program since its inception in 2013.
Nice. Does the board have any questions? I would just like to say that this is the final of the 2019 rounds, and, you know, a lot of the projects, all of them, basically, it's just that extra money to just push them over the finish line, you know? Clark Summit, Pat, how many projects have you guys utilized?
What's it for you guys?
Yeah, step up to the podium for a second. Pat, Clark Summit's perceived probably about four or five of them, at least, from, I think, for some memorials to, you name it, a mini-park, pocket park, sidewalks, you name it, a little bit of everything.
Exactly. There's been a few, and the one that myself and the mayor were mostly involved, the mayor was involved, too.
The mayor.
The Pocket Park and Veterans Park, I was mostly the Veterans Park. And again, like I said previously, if it wasn't for the Commissioners, allowing us to have that funding, it never would have happened. You know, we did go out, we raised over $8,000 or $9,000, but you guys made the difference. The Conservancy Par, Trail up in the Abingtons, they had one, ran all the way down the line here, all through the years, we never had anything, and you guys kind of topped it off with your...
Meeting Place?
Right.
Meeting Place, yeah.
Exactly. So, this program that Brenda's talking about, and when I applied, I can't say enough about her, she was very, very helpful to us in obtaining that grant. So, I encourages and thank you from the bottom of our heart for this program, and keep it going.
Thank you, Patrick.
It's a county, county money. This isn't a grant, this is county grants, so.
Yeah.
This is your tax dollars coming back to your area.
Exactly.
So, that's what these specific grants are, so.
Right, and most of these communities, like was said, that without this funding, it wouldn't have happened. It wouldn't have happened in Clark Summit Borough without your help. So, again, a great program, thank you for all that you've done, and I know Ms. Sacco will carry on there. She's an excellent young lady. Thank you.
Yeah, puts everything over the finish line.
Thanks, Patrick.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving Lackawanna County Reinvestment Program applications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0314.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit for the Clark Summit ADA Audible Signal Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Clark Summit ADA Audible Signal Project. General Construction Northeast Signal and Electric Company, Factoryville, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $85,106. And here to speak on this resolution once again is Acting Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco.
This resolution is approving standard required CDBG agreements for the Clark Summit Borough ADA Audible Signal Project. There's a cooperation agreement with the municipality and a contractor agreement. The cooperation agreement is an agreement between the county and the municipality that states the rights and responsibilities of both parties. This agreement also protects the county in the case of project overages. The contractor agreement awards the project to the contractor who was the lowest, most responsible bidder, who in this case is Northeast Signal and Electric Company for $85,106.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, did this go through the Controller's Office for the bids?
Yes.
This went through the Controller's Office? Okay.
Every CDBG project goes through the Controller's Office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0315.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mayfield. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mayfield for the Mayfield Borough Sports Complex ADA Walkway Reconstruction Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Mayfield, Mayfield Borough Sports Complex ADA Walkway Project. General Construction, Andrew Balden Construction from Mayfield, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $24,850. Here to speak once again is Brenda Sacco.
Thank you. This, again, is just the standard required CDBG agreements. We have the cooperation agreement with the municipality and the contractor agreement, and in this case, it's Mayfield Borough for the Sports Complex ADA Walkway Reconstruction Project, and Balden Construction, who was the lowest, most responsible bidder for $24,850.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions from Brenda Sacco? I'd like to make a motion entering into cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mayfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0316.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore for the Dunmore Mill Street Sidewalk and Pavement Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Mill Street Sidewalk and Pavement Project. General Construction, Leeward Construction from Honesdale, the lowest and most responsible and qualified bidder for $287,337. And once again, to speak on this resolution is Brenda Sacco.
Thank you. Again, this resolution's approving the standard required CDBG agreements. In this case, it's for the Dunmore Borough Mill Street Sidewalk and Pavement Project. And the lowest, most responsible bidder is Leeward Construction for two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to table this for reasons that were just discussed with the solicitor.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. We'll talk about it before the next meeting. Okay. Nineteen dash zero three one seven.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is approving the submission of a home program grant application, approving the submission of a home program grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Resources Development Cooperation for the Grace Street Apartment Project. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County. And whereas, the home applicant is desirous of obtaining funds from DCED for affordable housing activities fundable under Title II of the National Affordable Act of nineteen-ninety and the implementing regulations at twenty-four CFR Part ninety-two. And whereas, Lackawanna County is sponsoring a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, through the home grant program on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Resource Development Cooperation to assist with the revitalization of the Grace Street Apartments, one nineteen through one-twenty-one Grace Street in Old Forge, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that a housing need exists that has been identified in the local or state consolidated plan and the proposed housing activity addresses this need. And furthermore, be it resolved that the home applicant has conducted the required citizen participation process and that the home applicant will assure the provision of the other necessary funds to make the activity feasible. And that the home applicant will reimburse the Commonwealth for any expenditures found by DCED to be ineligible. And be it further resolved that Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents and accept any awards if approved related to this home program grants. Here to speak on this resolution, Brenda Sacco.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a home grant on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Resource Development Corporation for the rehabilitation of a six-unit multifamily apartment complex on Grace Street in Old Forge, Pennsylvania, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. This apartment project will benefit low to moderate income families. Any questions?
Yeah, how much is the grant for?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
And the project's cost?
Well, there's, it's approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And there's many different things that are built into that, such as engineering, architectural, and administration of the grant.
So, what are they, what are they going to get from that grant? They wouldn't get the whole amount, is my point?
I believe it was six, around six-hundred thousand dollars of actual construction cost.
Okay, so that's what they're going to actually get? And then their investment would be a hundred thousand?
They actually have a match of over a hundred thousand, I believe. They have to come up with sixty-five percent, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent, which is around a hundred and eighty thousand.
So, they do twenty-five percent and the state does sixty-five percent? No, because that's not enough.
No, they have to match twenty-five percent.
So, it's sixty-five percent or less that they have to, how are they doing that?
So, if it's, the cost is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, they have to come up with twenty-five percent of that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the board have any other questions?
No.
I'd like to make a motion approving submission of a home program grant application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thanks, Brenda. Nineteen dash zero three one eight.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into a plowing agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Frank Morell from Dunmore to provide snow plowing services to access its emergency services towers at Blair Hill and WNEP Tower at five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a plow for a term of five years commencing December first, twenty-nineteen, and terminating November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And here to speak on this resolution will be Attorney Don Frederickson.
I'm filling in for Dave Han, our emergency service director, he's not well today. But basically, as I understand it, it's an agreement. We have two towers that have emergency transmitters on and part of the agreement for them hosting those transmitters is that we have to maintain access to the towers. So, in the winter, when it snows more than two inches, we have to plow the roads and this is a contract to pay Mr. Morell for each plow.
Okay, questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a plow agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Morning Commissioners, Bob Bowles, Scranton. Fran, it was nice to see you know how to use a camera yet. There you go. You know, it was great to see Jack Hines here tonight. We all know what Jack accomplished and, you know, he was a great guy for the community and what he did for the kids that are all grown up around here or married today and can remember how they were trained. So, it's nice to see we have people like that in this community. I'd like to just bring up about Roseanne Novembreno, who was an extremely competent individual, was one hell of a friend. And for many, many years, Roseanne attended my dinner that I do, the Bob Bowles Christmas Dinner, for many, many years. In the last couple of years, she was unable to do it. We always saw she had a meal. And this year, I'm dedicating the dinner, my Christmas dinner that we hold every year to her memory. She was definitely not only a public servant, but she was a human being in this community and really looked out for everybody.
We did a moment of silence, just so you know, this morning, we did a moment of silence for her too.
It is.
Yeah, she's a fabulous lady.
And her memory will go along in this area for what she accomplished and what she did in, or she was really going to be hard to fail. It was interesting this morning when I pulled up out front, there used to be vet parking. That's gone now. So, we as vets have to go find the case, act the park. I'd like the county to make, geez, I hate to see our other Commissioner leave. We'll have to wait he comes back next year and see if he'll stick around for a meeting. I'd like to see a motion made that our vets in Lackawanna County get some kind of sticker or something that allows them free parking throughout the county and throughout the city of Scranton. I think it's to honor our vets, who we are, what we were, and what we did for this country. And it was disappointing to see that gone there this morning. I probably have a thirty-dollar ticket sitting out there waiting for me. And it's just not right the way our vets are treated in this community. I've sponsored PTSD programs, I'm doing them in Florida right now. I wish we could get it done here. And you guys all know me, you know, we're all part of the same group. And hopefully, some will change here that we're going to honor our vets in the way they should be honored and deal with the PTSD program. Remember, PTSD affects everyone, not just veterans. It could be first responders, it could be just people at home that witnessed the death when they walked in the door or something. So, it's something that I was hoping that we could have did in this county. As you know, I brought a clinical psychologist up here twice and it was to no avail, and that was very disappointing. Because I thought we were always, we were one of the most progressive counties in the state to try and get something done. This past week, I was giving by the American Towing Association along with Richie Breyer, who had a devastating fire, a fellow towler. His building burned down this last couple of weeks. And he was given recognition for what they did at an accident in Clark Summit where the driver was trapped for almost seven, eight hours in a tractor-trailer accident. And they were recognized by the American Towing Association for what they did. I was also given a medal for, called a trust medal by the American Towing Association. I was nominated by a group, an independent group that chose, I think like fifty towers throughout the country to receive that award. And it's about being in Scranton, Pennsylvania. That's what made me even prouder to say I'm a Scrantonian. The other part that I missed, I wasn't around, was about the monument here. And I know Commissioner Cummings had an issue about what was on the monument, about what should be put on it. Well, our bill says something like this in here. "In God we trust." And that's what it means. That's who we have, whether it's Jesus Christ or it's God. We don't sit here on the dollar bill or any dollar bill or anything we see in this country. In the military, when we pledge allegiance to that flag, we don't read some poem, verses this, that, and the other by John or Luke or something like that. It's one nation under God. And all the theology and all the other BS that goes with it belongs outside the door. This is one nation under God, whether we want to call it under Jesus Christ. It's a nation under God. When we put a uniform on, it was one nation under God. We never change it. When we salute the flag, it's one nation under God. And anything else on that monument is a damn shame. And it's a slap in the face to everyone who salutes that flag, whether it's at a race or it's at a public meeting. We all salute the flag and it's one nation under God. And anything else on that monument, it should be stricken. It should be honored. Commissioner, I respect for you standing up for what the hell you did with these people. They should stand in line and remember who we are, what we believe in, and I don't give a damn what denomination you are. Everybody believes in God, whether they want to be Jewish, Polish, French, Irish, whatever they are, no matter what country in it, I've traveled all over the world, there's a God. And don't make any mistake about it. And I'm not here preaching, that's his job over here to do. Right, Chaplain? I don't want to take your job away from you, believe me. But I think you could understand what I'm saying when you represent all of us that were in uniform, represented as a group under God. Commissioner, don't back down. I know time is running out. Pat, pay attention, please. I'd like you to-
I paid attention also.
I know, I'm picking on you there.
Bob, we let you sit here and talk, you go, you know, when you go to other places, they don't let you go. We like you.
You gotta, you see, because-
You're here to be able to voice your opinion.
I know, I had a pick on you there. I mean, I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna get many more opportunities to do this, you know. And I think a motion should be made out of respect to both the US Commissioners, to our people in uniform, and our people as a whole in this country, that that monument should have "under God" on it. And nothing more, nothing less. The other thing I want to bring up is, my pet peeve is the pillows for the prison. I know there's a prison board meeting, but you guys have the power to say yea or nay, whether it's here or over there, to give our prisoners pillows. You know, the nonsense we went through with Zalogo, I have litigation against them for the treatment that I didn't receive at the prison. He put my life in jeopardy. And that's going to come out as we get down the road. The other thing, before I shut up here, remember Naught Park just as we did Rocky Glen. Okay, I have an issue with Naught Park in the city of Scranton right now, where they just raised taxes. But they could go after Guy Singer, I filed an injunction, the hearing will be in January, to get more money for the people of Lackawanna County, more importantly, for the people in the city of Scranton that just got hit with a tax increase. They want to allow Guy Singer to pay a dollar a day at a park. I'm going to pay more money out here probably when I go to my vehicle for being here longer than I should have been and get a ticket here than they're paying up there, a dollar a day, which is an absolute joke. I looked for at least the price of a Big Mac.
I'm not supposed to really speak at this point because we speak under Commissioners' new business, but let's just say this, if that was the county property, it wouldn't be a dollar a day.
I understand that, Commissioner, I'm with you a thousand percent.
We'd love to have that option.
And again, just remember, I do have the Bob Bowles Christmas Dinner, it'll be the twenty-sixth year I'm doing it. It's open to each and everyone who doesn't want-
What time, Bob?
It goes from noon till six, it's an all-day buffet. And last year, we were over three thousand people on Christmas Day. Not counting who we deliver to and who we pick up. And when everybody leaves, they take a take-home meal with them.
Nice.
Thank you. And I doubt if I'll be back again because I've got too many different things going on. But thank you for your service of everything you two guys have done. Walk with your heads held high, you did a hell of a job for this county and I want to thank you for it.
Thanks, Bob.
With that, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope your future's very bright. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna bring up about the vet parking deal.
This morning I sent a request to ABM to restore the-
Go over to the podium because I was gonna bring you up under Commissioners, Commissioners' other business, but I want, yeah, because I want to make sure that for our veterans that are here and all of them that are viewing audience, I didn't know that was down. And I was gonna bring them up under Commissioners' business, but Joe stood up.
Yeah, we have been working with ABM to establish parking in front of the building for CYS veterans and aging. So, we're organizing the spots out right now. So, the spot that they put the aging sign up was where the veteran sign was, and that was an error. So, I have contacted ABM this morning to put the veteran sign back up and we're trying to figure out a spot for the aging. We do need the two CYS spots because they bring the children to the building, so they have to be out front. So, we're establishing zones out front that will have bus drop-off, veterans parking, CYS parking. So, that's already been addressed.
Can you take care of my ticket then today?
I'm away from city government right now, so you'll have to deal with ABM on that.
But no, we were gonna, we were gonna talk about that, I want to make sure of that. No, we had a veteran spot out there, it's coming back, so.
Yeah, we're also trying to get a bus, a better bus stop for handicapped accessibility to the building as well. So, since the new program came into place, it's a bit unsettled with the kiosks and then Wyoming Avenue was closed last week because of the holiday fair, so we really didn't get a chance to get into it last week. So, it is, it is being addressed.
Stay on top of that sign, okay? I want to get that changed out, okay?
Yeah, we are working on that, okay?
Thank you.
Beautiful, thanks, Joe.
Joan Hodawannett, one oh one Penn Avenue, Scranton. First, I want to congratulate you on the wonderful Winter Market, it was outstanding. Now, you know how organized and disciplined I am, and I had all my Christmas shopping done, and I said, "Oh, stay away from that place." But like a fool, I said, "Well, I'll just take a little peek inside." So, you open the door and what hit you in the face but the smell of freshly baked goods?
And very warm, isn't it very, Joan, is it very warm inside too?
Oh, yes, it was, okay. So, what you need on the outside is, you know, like the Electric City light sign, you need a sign up there and it should say, "Abandon all hope, you dieters who enter here." It was, it was cruel. It was just absolutely cruel. So, they got you in there and all you see is people drooling from one end of the block to the other. But the merchandise was superior, it was all quality stuff, the vendors were wonderful. I don't really think there was anything, you know, that could approach price gouging. I think they were just, you know, selling and people were, you know, not overly complaining about prices or anything, and everybody was happy with what they saw. But please, no more baked goods. That was downright evil. Speaking of downright evil, okay, let's move on to other issues. Back in June of two thousand eighteen, county commissioners approved the sale of the old administration building to Warner, to Jefferson Warner. That's eighteen months ago. And the deed never transferred in two thousand eighteen, so we lost all potential tax revenue for all of two thousand and nineteen. And I checked the tax assessor's database and-
Joan, Joan, what did you say? You talking about Adams Avenue?
Yes, I am.
We still had people, we're still moving people over and a little bit of everything at that point.
And when is it going to transfer?
We signed basically last week, so the transfer should be going through any time after it gets through lawyers.
Okay, I've heard September, I've heard this-
No, 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 Joan, this was signed, this was signed.
I just signed it, honest to God, I just signed it yesterday.
We told you at the last meeting it was going to happen.
I was in here at the last-
Oh, whoever, who asked, someone asked about, oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry, Marie. But yes, Marie asked and we told it was December fifth or sixth. It was signed or a little bit later than that.
Because it hasn't appeared in the paper and it's still covered, counted as a county building in the database.
For the new year, absolutely.
Because we need that, because if it's not transferred by the end of the year, we lose all tax revenue for twenty-twenty.
No, it's done, we just signed up on it.
It's done, it's done.
Promise.
I'll find you between January first and the fifth.
We'll be here, I'll be here at a meeting, so you can find me very easily, so.
Now, the good news as far as I could see is I didn't see any more legal fees with regard to the prisons, is that right, Gary?
That's right, Joan, there was no official-
Okay, that was the good news. Now, let's talk about the bad news. I was not happy to read in the paper about this quote-unquote "forced labor" claim against the Lackawanna County Recycling Center, okay? And I, I'm not commenting on the merits of this upcoming lawsuit, one way or the other, because I know that you can't comment on it. But I don't know how many of the general public are aware of this new issue, and I think they should be, because I think there are legitimate questions to ask above and beyond the lawsuit. So, you will excuse me, but I'm going to read the editorial that was published by the Times Tribune on December fifth.
Joan.
I'm going to read it, because I have some questions to ask, which go beyond the issue of the lawsuit itself. "One-sided Contract Embarrassing Regardless..."
You realize that we have nothing to do with that contract, that that happened so long ago, and I want people to realize that, don't want people sitting there blaming us.
This is an automatically renewing contract, so you do have the ability to step in.
No, no, it just renews, there's no-
You can stop an automatically renewing contract.
I'll have to, you have to ask the, I'll speak to the solicitor about that.
Let me read this, because I want the general public to start asking questions. "Regardless of the outcome of a lawsuit accusing Lackawanna County of facilitating slave-like labor, the underlying contract at the heart of the matter is an affront to the very concept of good governance. Three men who had been jailed at the Lackawanna County Prison for the non-criminal offense of child support delinquency contend in a potential federal-class action lawsuit that they were forced to work at the Lackawanna County Recycling Center for five dollars a day. They claim not only that the near-slavery wages violates labor laws, but that it precluded them from working at other work-release jobs that would have enabled them to pay down their delinquency." their delinquencies. According to their claim, they had to work at the recycling center nearly for free to even qualify for other work-release opportunities. That would mean that the policy also adversely affected the children for whom the men were under court orders to pay support. If the suit succeeds, it also will adversely affect Lackawanna County taxpayers, since hundreds of people potentially could join the class that the suit seeks to create. One of the plaintiffs, William L. Burl Jr., originally filed a similar suit on his own in 2014, but it was dismissed by a district court judge. Ominously for the county, the Third Circuit Court of Appeals reinstated the suit in 2018. Now, the Colorado-based Workers' Rights Group Towards Justice represents the plaintiffs. Under a woeful 2006 contract between the Lackawanna County Solid Waste Management Authority and Lackawanna County Recycling Center Incorporated, which is owned by Dominic and Louis DeNAble of Dunmore, taxpayers own the recycling center and the company operates it. The company pays the county $60,000 a year while relieving the government of risks inherent in the volatile recycling business. The business reaps profits or absorbs losses from the recycling business. In effect, the county has provided millions of dollars worth of free labor to the enterprise, which returns $60,000 a year. That's a lousy deal, even beyond its dubious moral dimensions. And the contract automatically renews, meaning that there has been no public scrutiny regarding performance, much less a debate on whether it is in the public interest. Now that the recycling industry is stressed for a variety of reasons, it might not be in the county's best interest to challenge the contract, but the long-term giveaway to a private enterprise compounded by provision of nearly free labor stands as an example of how not to conduct public business. Now, I don't know anything about the merits of these claims. They may be nothing more than brouhaha. I don't know. I do know that Bob Bowles addressed this issue some time ago about inmates working at this recycling center for this kind of pittance, asking questions like, were they getting workman's comp? Were they paying FICA tax? Are they getting W-2 statements? And I don't know what the answers are. To my knowledge, a contract which automatically renews can be challenged if there's a problem with it. You don't have to suck it up, okay? So I think someone needs to take a hard look at that, and I will be doing a right-to-know request for that contract. This is really bothersome. First of all, we're looking at more legal fees, and Gary, heads up, I'll be asking you for the totals on a monthly basis, so heads up, because I think this is going to cost us money one way or the other. But the moral insensitivity of having these people who need to pay down their child support delinquencies working for $5 a day, who came up with that idea and that contract in 2006? I know neither of you were on the board, on the Commissioners' Board, but I cannot accept the fact that, well, this was contract made in 2006, it automatically renews, and there's nothing we can do about it. I do not accept that, and I hope that everybody hearing this on the ECTV and reads about it in the newspaper will start asking questions, because this offends me more than in my wallet. This offends me. I think there's, this is basically wrong, and we need an explanation. Perhaps the paper has gotten it all wrong, but it needs to be answered.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Marie is going to speak.
Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road in Scranton. First, because it's the issue that's most dear and near to my heart, because for years I walked by that granite slab that said Brotherhood at the top and saw Anonymous, and I thought, how could anybody not know that? And then I responded when I had the opportunity, and I was disappointed with the outcome, but now a new element has come up. Reverend Warner's used two words together that I had never heard joined before, which was intentional censorship.
That's right.
And I did do some research since that 26th of November meeting, and that could very well result in, if it's not changed to show who actually said it, since that's what has happened on all of the other quotes, that could be grounds for the city or the county being sued.
Yep.
So that's the least, but I just want to know. This is a project that was supposed to have been completed by now, and nobody ever corrected it when it said it was going to be done before the end of this summer. So now I would like to know, who and when will that decision be made? Who will make the decision, and when will we know it? Okay. Maybe in your, in your Commissioners' Other Business, but I think we have a right to know when that decision's going to be made and who's going to be making it, and be aware that there could be a lawsuit. Next, what, I've had no follow-up on my request for that building permit, also on the 26th of November. Is anybody working that?
What building permit?
The young woman who took it, I don't remember what group they were with, community something or other.
Community relations, would that be correct?
I think that's probably it, yes.
Okay.
Is there, is there a number for them that I could?
Marie, what building was it? I forget, there's so many things that go on.
Oh, it was a, it was just a property. I didn't bring the pin number.
Oh, okay, it was just a property, property, okay.
It was a property that the ratio of the selling price to the-
Yes, she asked.
Selling price to the assessment was 35.
Okay, I remember it now.
And they bought it at a judicial sale for $6,500 and then sold it for mega bucks.
Can we see if we can find out?
Caitlin is here with an update.
Oh, cool. Oh, great.
Okay.
Okay, well, wait until you get done, Marie.
Okay, fine. And then the next, Joan talked about the 200 Adams Avenue, because I've been watching since the 5th of December, but it also clicked something else in my mind, and that is, we're going to be getting slightly less in tax dollars for that property because of the LERT having been passed. And because the LERTs last for so long, I think it would be right, and transparency is big with me, and I think the LERTs should be available that are issued, should be available online so that they can be followed up. People have a tendency to forget things sometimes in, you know, 10 days, 10 months, 10 years is a long time, and I think the public should have a right to know whether those properties are being reinstated at the end of those 10 years. So I would like to ask that you do that, and I will be back next year with some more recommendations for some increased transparency. So thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Thanks, Marie. Okay, Commissioner comments?
Well, to Joan, I'm not sure, I didn't read that contract, but I mean, I am sure that you and I would be on two separate sides of that prison contract issue, just in regards to my philosophy and your philosophy, but as for the issue that they raised in that editorial, I didn't read the contract, so I will read it and see what that's all about. But I was waiting for the prison board meeting, so sorry about that, but I will read more into that, and I do have your CD, but I have to bring it back for you. Marie, I don't know, I mean, I've asked about when the stuff is going to go on, the monument, and I would like to thank the viewers that sent me multiple emails and multiple letters thanking me for my work on this and for their research, looking into it and finding out that it is appropriate the way I'm asking it to be put up. It could be appropriate either way, so, you know, a lot of people in Lackawanna County are out there looking this up, so that makes me extremely happy because they're all reading Jesus's words, so that just makes me happy, but it should be completed the appropriate way, and I have not gotten an answer, Marie, just, I'll answer you, I have no idea when it's going to be completed, because I haven't gotten an answer. I don't, Maureen McGuigan is the department head, so you can call her, and, you know, the company that is doing the work told me that they didn't get any directive yet, so that was the last time I spoke to them, and I think the Scranton Times reported the same thing, that they didn't get a directive yet, so I'm not sure what's going to happen. But I will say that a lot of people have expressed interest and thanks to me for the work. I have not gotten, well, I got one negative. I did get one negative, and I'm not even going to address it because it was so terrible that I won't, I'm not even going to address it, but anyway. So that's on that, and then a LERT on 200 Adams Ave, there's a LERT on 200 Adams Ave?
Not that I know of. It would have to come in front of us. It would have to come in front of us.
We didn't do a LERT on 200-
We didn't do, yeah, we'd have to, that'd have to come in front of us.
Individually, you passed-
That would be a, we passed a LERT, but I think that, that's-
Any improvement in those 10 years, I believe, is automatically-
The LERT was for new construction in the city of Scranton.
That wasn't ours, that, yeah.
New construction in the city of Scranton. And that was new construction. I'd have to look, I'm pretty sure it was new construction in the city of Scranton, to try to bring people in, I think it was for 10 years. That would be new construction, it's an existing building, I'm not sure.
Well, on the LERT, I think for existing buildings, what it is, is the improvement part of it gets a LERT, but not, so it's only a certain percentage of that if whatever their, which Joe probably knows all about, he probably knows more about it because he was studying it, but he's behind it, but.
Joe, would you like to give him talk about it a little bit?
Okay, whatever, I don't blame you. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to pull you into the-
She just brought my attention. No, I know that it's, I'll talk with the Commissioners' Other Business, I'm getting too much now.
Sorry.
Commissioner, finish.
Okay, so anyway, I know that there's on the, there's only a percentage on it, so that would, I guess I would look and see what that would be as well. And then to Bob, I want to thank him, and thank you, Marie and Joan, for coming in all the time to address the board on your questions and concerns. I do appreciate it. There's a couple of things that I wanted to talk about that I saw in the news recently. You know, I was, I heard a report from, I'm not sure, I know I spoke about the Volpe report and how we're going to be reassessed, so, but between the newspaper articles and the TV appearances, I've heard that somewhere along the line, we hired all these new people, and-
We don't hire, I just want to put this out real quick. Have we made up new positions? I think maybe a couple, but very rare. The way that we try to keep within our budget is to always, we just hire when people retire, or sometimes when people retire, sometimes we could just even eliminate the position.
That's right.
So, yeah, that's basically a lie.
Well, that's why I went back, and it was for this year, and I was like, you know what, I am not going to allow this to be stated without just throwing out there like it's fact when it isn't. Now, the approved hires for this year, I approved 38 of, it looks like, 99. 16 of my 38 were full-time and part-time COs at the prison.
Or savings.
Which is a savings for the part-timers, and that was a class for, you know, it's hard to, there's a big turnaround at our prison, so we're constantly losing people and bringing more people in, so there's always hiring going on there. But, you know, when the class is done, the warden will interview them and then, you know, look for us to hire as many as we possibly can through his recommendations to make up for the shortfall that we always seem to have, because so many people come and leave and go, you know, at the prison, so that's the issue there, but, yeah, just so, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not, they're not going to come in here next year and say, "I did anything with new hires," because they can't. I have the numbers, I had 38 last year. Again, 16 were, that I signed off on, 16 were correctional officers at the prison, so-
I think most of that 38 was probably corrections officers, a lot of corrections officers.
Well, there's 6, I count them, I have them right here. I have the, and I will bring this, I will have this in my file at my house for anybody to view if they want to see it, because you know what? I am not going to, they're not going to put stuff in the paper that is not true about me, they are not. So that just did not happen, and I can confirm that, and I will sit down with anybody that wants to say I'm wrong, because I pulled the facts up, so that's that. Another issue that came up was lines at the tax office. Well, you know, as a taxpayer from Old Forge, who doesn't trust government entities to begin with, I always came to Scranton to pay my taxes so I can get a physical receipt in my hand, because I would not trust them to mail one back to me. And I have this ability, this thing in my thinking that I make them wait for their money, so I pay it the very last day that I possibly can in the year. And when you do things like that, you run into a very long line of people at the tax office, because it appears that I am not the only one that has this way of thinking. So I can remember standing, and it was in the Scranton Times, I'm just, Lena and I searched, but, you know, it was, we couldn't find the articles, but there has been articles written about the long lines at the tax office at the mall, where, and I remember the picture because I was literally so glad I wasn't standing in that line, I was like, I think it was 2016, and so it went, they didn't have seats for the people there, Commissioner.
No.
You went to the mall, and it was in the back corner by the, where their old Bon-Ton was, and they had a little tiny office with the glass door, and they had a little roped area to start the line, and then it went down to Bon-Ton's doorway, then over across to the other side of the mall, then up the other side of the hallway, and then over across the other section where there actually was one bench. So the lines happened because of the timing, so when they want discount period, which is what that last report was, people wanted to get here in time for the discount period. So it was the last day or that last two days of that discount period, and that's why the long line, because apparently that's what we people do, that's, we just, we wait until the last minute, okay? Or we just don't trust people and want to get there and do, we want that hand receipt, we want that in our hand. So, you know, those are the two issues I see. As far as parking, we never had parking at Adams Avenue, never. There was no parking. Did we have parking? We had three spots.
Never.
So that was the other issue, parking. Well, regardless, I mean, this is Scranton. Scranton is, it's difficult to get parking in Scranton, very difficult. I hate coming to Scranton, but, anyway, so that's that topic on the lines at the tax office. We are always going to have lines at the tax office. The only thing we could possibly do is offer seats, which they didn't get that at the mall, trust me, I was one of the taxpayers there, and nobody offered me a seat to sit in and wait while I was in the line. We got seats now?
We're waiting.
Okay. So now, when we come up here on the 31st to pay, go ahead.
For our elderly, Commissioner, we did, we did, we recognized the problem, and we rectified the problem by bringing out some chairs for some folks.
Yep.
Through our maintenance department.
See, so they get treated better in this building than they did in the other one.
That's because as the county, we're making sure we're taking care of our taxpayers over there, they weren't worried about that.
That's right.
We are worried about that.
Thank you. So now they're getting, and we have wheelchairs here too for them. I know Evy Raffalco went and got a wheelchair and we have that downstairs in case people need that. So the last one was reassessment, which I've talked about on multiple occasions. Yes, that was stated. I went back and watched the tapes. Yes, it was stated that they're going to do reassessment and increase taxes or increase the economy. Or what does he say? And I forget how he worded it, but I have it here. Economic development. Economic development's doing fair, pretty well. I mean, our airport has shown every single meeting, we have a record number of sales and people getting on our airplanes. We have the lowest unemployment rate in, I think, our history around here, but I'll just say it's very low. And I will thank our president for that. And as far as the statue, I really hope that that gets resolved. I want to see that done before I leave. I have been working on it and I do appreciate, Marie. You deserve the credit for bringing that to us with Jesus's acknowledgement to John 15:13. I have one other topic that I've always tried to talk about, and that is marijuana and the vaping crisis. Now, it was written in the Scranton Times about this in, I think, page B10 or something like that, after I addressed it last meeting with, you know, my concerns about vaping and how it has to do with the THC inside the vaping. And there's this push to try and say it has to do with the fact that it's black market products. So there's a group called Smart, or SAM, Smart Approaches to Marijuana, Preventing Another Big Tobacco. And I just want to read a little bit from their articles that they ran on this subject. Dear friend, as you know, information regarding the source of the vaping products causing the current pot vaping crisis have been hard to come by. On Wednesday, Massachusetts Public Health officials reported eight more cases of illness in the state, but were refusing to say how many were linked to the use of so-called regulated products. We issued a public records request and a Freedom of Information Act request to try and force state officials to shine a light on data that was being hidden from the public. As a result, this morning, the Boston Globe reported that six patients in the state suffering from the vaping illness were using products from the state's legal market. So the products came from a dispensary that the state was running. State and federal agencies have been tight-lipped concerning these crucial pieces of data, which has allowed the marijuana industry to run interference by saying the issue lies solely on the underground market. We are now to repeat this, we are now working to repeat this success nationwide and to bust the marijuana history's talking point, that this crisis is solely an underground market issue. And that's just infuriating to me, and that's what they're trying to do. It is the THC that's in these products that is harming these people. The other issue I wanted to bring up, and I think this is going to be very relevant to our county, is that HHS, SAM, this group I get my information from, is applauding HHS for blocking opioid grant funds for medical marijuana programs. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration announced on Friday that federal monies doled out by the health agency would no longer flow to individuals or organizations that use, prescribe, or provide marijuana for the treatment of opioid use disorder and mental health issues. Furthermore, Director Eleanor McCain Katz stated that treatment programs must document efforts urging patients to stop using marijuana to prevent a loss of federal funding. I want to, I want to repeat that. Director Eleanor McCain Katz stated that treatment programs must document efforts urging patients to stop using marijuana to prevent a loss of federal fundings. We commend the Department of Health and Human Services for this decision, which will have a significant positive impact on public health, said Dr. Kevin Sabett, President of Smart Approaches to Marijuana and former Senior Drug Policy Advisor to the Obama Administration. Numerous studies have been released in the last year alone showing that marijuana use has no positive impact on opioid addiction. It is refreshing to see SAM HSA take such a firm action against the misinformation campaign being peddled on this front by the marijuana industry. Claiming marijuana could be a solution to the opioid epidemic has been a key talking point for the marijuana industry in its efforts to legalize the drug. Legalization supporters have covered states considering legalization in billboards promoting a 2014 study claiming states that legalized marijuana experienced a 25% reduction in opioid deaths. This year, Stanford researchers attempted to recreate the 2014 study and instead found legalization resulted in a 25% increase in opioid deaths. Let me repeat that. In 2014, they recreated the study and instead found legalization resulted in a 25% increase in opioid deaths. Just last week, Canadian researchers at McMaster University analyzed 23 studies with more than 3,600 participants and found that marijuana use neither led to reduced opioid use during treatment, nor did it lead to people staying in treatment programs. In October, a study by researchers in Oregon and California found 78% of states where marijuana use was legal, significantly higher rates of opioid-related deaths after legalization than states that have not legalized the drug. Furthermore, a study published earlier this year in Substance Use and Addiction, a JAMA-related publication, concluded that medical marijuana law enactment was not associated with a reduction in individual-level non-medical opioid use, contradicting the hypothesis that people would substitute marijuana for prescription opioids. Furthermore, researchers from the National Institutes of Health found that marijuana users are 2.6 times more likely than non-users to abuse opioids and develop an opioid addiction. For too long, we have allowed the marijuana industry to play fast and loose with the science while ignoring warnings from the medical and scientific communities. You know, I just, I'm going to continue to talk about this even when I'm not here. I've researched this. I know the facts. They want to try and make it as though it's, there's always another excuse. Then it was the black market. Well, it's not the black market. It's, the studies prove that it was not the black market. It's been done in the dispensaries. That's where they're getting this product from. It's not from the black market. It's THC, period. Vaping has been around for a very long time, and it just started killing people within the last year after the, I read in the last meeting when I read the information on how that vaping was approved, it was through our state, state government. So that's how it came about. And, you know, I'm not concerned, I'm concerned about the health of the kids and our citizens. And that's, that's what I'm always going to be concerned about. They're not going to stop me from talking about that. I don't understand why anybody would think that legalizing yet another drug into society is somehow going to be a good thing to do. It doesn't make any sense. It's, you know, as well as some of the things that happen in society already, doesn't make a lot of sense, but there you go. So I just hope that people start waking up to the fact and start paying attention to what's happening around them because there's a lot of things going on right now that are difficult for the citizens to have to deal with. And I think, you know, one of the things, just asking for a name to be put on a monument is maybe where some of our hope would lie. Maybe somebody would get some hope from that. So thank you. We are having a meeting on the 18th, Commissioner?
Yes.
All right, so then I will-
One week today.
I will wish them Merry Christmas then. So we have one more meeting after this, and that's next Wednesday. So I hope to see people attend that meeting. It is our last meeting that, for Commissioner O'Malley-
Yeah, unless we have, let's look at emergency or something, we have a special meeting.
Yeah, so it'll be the last meeting that we would be up at the dais for. And there's people that are happy about that and people who are sad about that. I've enjoyed my time and I've enjoyed the people that come in and actually ask questions and pay attention to what's happening at Lackawanna County. So thank you very much. Thanks for the time, Commissioner.
Commissioner O'Malley, okay, nevermind. Okay. It's funny.
It's sad.
The, this is for Joan. The contract's 30 years old. I spoke to some attorneys about it a while ago. And basically was told there was nothing we could do about it at that point. But with that being said, I'd like to let it be known, I worked as a corrections officer and I've seen numerous inmates go to work either at the recycling center or the mountain crew to do work in the community. And everybody that I've ever known that were involved in this, they did it on their own. They asked to be part of it. Anybody that's ever been in prison would like the opportunity to go out and do anything outside of that prison. They just would. Nobody wants to be in prison. It's a long, 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 it's a lot of time. You mean, the minutes, you mean, all of us, our days go by so fast. When you're in prison, minutes or hours, seconds or minutes. It really is. That's what it's like. So, yeah, yeah, there's, sometimes there'd be long lists. It all depends on what's going on at that point. So any opportunity that any inmate, any inmate has to get out of the prison, they are the ones who usually come forward. They usually go through counselors to be able to do this. So they're kind of, they're vetted to make sure that they have the right background, that they're not going to go out and do anything or hurt anybody inside the community. Which, you know, I mean, you have to really check it out. There's a lot of different people you get out there. They're inmates. But I've never seen anybody that was under, like, that type of labor. They actually asked to do it. So, you know, I mean, it's something that you have to investigate, speak to your counselor out, if the prison, if you're out there, and ask if you could be on the mountain crew or recycling. That's how it's always been. But like you said, the contract's 30 years old. There's nothing that we could do about it. But also the alerta, we voted on the alerta, I forget, I think it was about a year ago, and that was for new construction in the city of Scranton. And I think with businesses or something big was the improvement. So there will be taxes come out of the building that there never was on the corner of Adams and Spruce. And like we promised, we promised that when we vacate the building that we would sell it and it would be on the tax roll, which we are going, we are doing. It's already signed off. And tomorrow, we are actually doing a press conference, so people will have an understanding with Mr. Jefferson of what is going to be going on in the building. From apartments to retail to all the great things. It's a beautiful building. It's a historical building. And, I mean, they don't build buildings like that anymore. They just don't. I mean, that's made to last hundreds of years, just like this building is. 1885, half of it, and I think the rest was 1895. So. Yeah, there's another thing. Yeah, you brought that up about the Volpe show. It's kind of funny. The halls. So people understand, we involved, I'm losing, what's his name? I'm having, I'm forgetting right now. We involved the Disabilities Committee to actually, to give us an opportunity-
Keith Williams, Commissioner.
To go along with when we're rebuilding the blueprints. So a lot of times when you go through this hallway, a lot of them are like ramped off and stuff, well, that's AD accessible. A lot of it, that's the way it's set up. And people got to realize is that when the building was built, some of the building was built a little higher or lower because there was two sections of this building built. So it's an older building. And like I said, we brought in Keith Williams to be able to work with our contractors and with our, with the actual architect to have an understanding that this would be accessible to all citizens. Our building, all citizens. Not just throwing out lease money and rent money for years. And, I mean, it's always alluded to, the big black hole and all this crazy stuff. Our own paper actually used to talk about how we didn't, like, the administration did not consolidate government. We started, the first four months we were here, first four months, first four months we bought the building. Immediately, we started having Christmas events here and making it a part of the, making it a part of the community again. You know what I mean? It's paid for with rents and leases. People don't understand that. I think we threw away like over $10 million on rents and leases or more. It's more like towards $15 million. Other administrations, soon as we had the option to do it, we pulled the trigger and made sure we bought this building. I think it was April 26th of 2016. I mean, this is a great project. People could say whatever they want about it. This is a great project. And like you said, it's paid for by the leases and rents and the savings that go along with it. And if anybody remembers what it was like to go to all those other locations, it was like being in a mouse maze in downtown Scranton. You were all over the place. We went from 13 locations. Now, the thing about Big Adams Avenue building is, all those departments, everything, one stop shopping here. We looked at how much it would cost to do a build-out on this building, to build this, to build a 255,000 square foot building. A rough building was like $60 million bucks without land acquisition. Like, this was vetted well. This wasn't a stupid plan. This was a smart plan. And like you said, it revitalized probably one of the most vital parts of downtown Scranton. Anybody who, like, for myself, 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s, this was the main area downtown. 100 block of Wyoming between Oppenheims and the Globe Store, this was the place to be. It is again, there's as much citizens coming on this block than there was back then, between our 700 employees and the people that are doing business here every single day. You can be bussed up to the front, well, you said, is there little hiccups? Absolutely. It's a building. It's a construction project. You mean, we're making sure all of them are taken care of. That's why I said, we finally got to painting the conference room table and putting the pictures up because we were letting our maintenance crew make sure that everything was ready for the citizens so the building could be at the best it could possibly be. And it started to realizing that savings. We had to move in here quick. We had to start realizing the savings. We put our other building up, and that's going back to the tax rolls. And we said, we weren't selling it to any nonprofits. We weren't. We were never going to do that. It was going back on the tax roll. And we made that happen. And it wasn't easy, but we made it happen. And it will be on the tax roll for 2020. So. I'd like to actually thank Mayor Herman Johnson and Councilman Patrick Williams. When you're a commissioner, I mean, we have a lot of stuff going on here. Like, I'm here for eight years. And you're working with leaders in the community on different parts of government. You know, I mean, Clark Summit Borough. You mean, it's great to work with people that are, that cross their Ts and dot their Is and really care as much as we did or I do, which I absolutely care immensely. And I'd like to thank both of you because, you know, I mean, if you don't come and apply for grants or come in and ask questions or reach out to economic development, you don't know about it. I mean, we try to push it out as much as we possibly can, but that's why we have that community relations. A lot of people sometimes try to downgrade that. My God, we have a department that just goes around to all of our elected officials' meetings and explains what's going on in Lackawanna County government. It's incredibly innovative. I mean, that's what this government is, and I would hope that it is in the future. I'm not sure. But I know that we made sure that it could be as innovative and as good as it could possibly be. And family-friendly. And that sounds silly to say family-friendly. No. Our, this environment, we want it to be family-friendly. We want our employees to treat everybody like they would treat their grandmother. We want everybody to come in and not be afraid to go on out to deal with government. You know, that's what it's about. And let me get back real quick to the 13 buildings. It was a literal mouse maze. We went from 13 buildings to five, and I'll name the five buildings. We have the Gateway Building, which a district attorney is going to be in, and also right now, the visitor center's in it. That's one. Then we have the Works Center. We own that building too. We also have probation. We could have probation in this building because probation, sometimes people can take on handcuffs. It's a very eventful type of office to be in. So that is over on Washington Avenue. So that's number four. Then we have the courthouse. And then you have us, 255,000 square feet of everything else consolidated into one building. Paid for by the money that was wasted on leases and rents. Your building, your county government building at the Globe. But getting back to the, to our elected officials, thank you for working with me. Thank you for coming out today. I wanted to especially bring Pat and the mayor in, invite some of our other veterans in, because one of the things we've all, we do now is every meeting since we've been elected, is we make sure that we have a veteran here every meeting, who they were, what they did, and to do the pledge. I hope that goes forward into the future. But I mean, that matters. And the both of you, thank you for your service, but thank you to your service in Clark Summit and just Lackawanna County in general. Because I know you don't just care about Clark Summit, like, there's a big glass wall around it. You care about all of Lackawanna County because that's a, that makes Clark Summit a great place if Lackawanna County's a great place. So thank you to the two of you, really. Great, great opportunity to work with both of you. I also want to bring up, so anybody in the viewing audience, once we have a snowstorm, there'll be free sleigh riding back at McDade Park. Come on back. The hill is second to none. Please, please, vote for Lackawanna River to be the best river ever because it's come a long way. And all of us know 40 years ago what it looked like. It smelled, it was horrible. It's beautiful, brown trout. The water is clear. We have a beautiful trail alongside of it. Like you said, water is life, and life is water. It really matters. So please, reach out and vote on pariver.org for the best river and put in Lackawanna County River. And the Winter Marketplace, just great. Just great. All the smiles, kids seeing Santa Claus, free pictures of Santa Claus, all the great things we talked about. And that's something I think that's part of what this administration was about. And I hope if they remember about our administration, it's about all the great things we try to bring in and try to make it really family-friendly and just great quality of life opportunities. And like you said, county government, there's government throughout Lackawanna County, all different types of government. But Lackawanna County government touches every single citizen, all 214,000, one way or another. I think we provided a good service, so. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today, and I'd like to make a motion. motion. Go ahead.
Beck. She had Marie's question. She was gonna answer Marie's question. Caitlin?
What was that one?
Caitlin?
Oh, Caitlin, I'm sorry. Caitlin, come up this-
(inaudible)
Okay. Let her talk to Marie. Okay.
I guess it's lengthy. Okay.
Okay, great. But I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Um, before you go, Fran and Jo-